I think we have everybody.
Mute? Alright, we're in John.
Why have, do we have to, again, prove the changes even though temporary?
That's up to you. Well. Jeffrey, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Ready?
Alright, um, we'll do the salute to the flag. Mr. Hall's room. There's one behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dylan? Can't hear him, is he there?
Is, uh, Mike there, Mr. Dylan there?
See him, let me, let me look. Yes, wait one second, my apologies. Alright, Mr. Dylan should be in now.
Mr. Dylan?
I thought something was wrong, uh, here.
Great, thank you. Mr. Artie?
Here.
Here, Leahy.
Yeah.
Five present, one absent.
Okay, uh, special order of business, communication, remote participation. Members of the public may view the meeting via LTC and those who should speak. We've got specific agenda items, they'll register to speak in advance of the meeting by sending an email to the superintendent's office indicating the agenda item. Uh, the minutes, need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular scheduled and the special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and to place them on files, they need a motion by Ms. Dylan, seconded by Ms. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, uh, with mute button. Uh, the permissions to enter for this week are in your packet, the recommendations approval is written, the staff is available for questions.
I mean, it's up to you.
Any questions by any of the members?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Clark, second by Mr. Dakota. To approve, roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dylan?
Yes.
Mr. Artie?
Yes.
Here, Leahy?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent approved.
Uh, memorials. First memorial at night is for George Nutter, brother of former school committee member Jerry, Jerry Nutter, cousin of special ed teacher Tina Nutter, retired elementary teacher Mary Ellen Pono, nephew of the late Walter Nutter, school adjustment counselor, slash high school teacher and cousin to former school committee member Clement McDonald. Second moment of silence is for Margaret Martin, mother of school committee member Connie Martin. We take a minute to have a moment of silence? Thank you. Subcommittee?
Yeah. Apparently, the meeting is muted for people that are listening. Someone just, someone just put that message up.
We have LTC in the meeting, so that's all.
Okay.
Alright, uh, let me do the memorials over then, just in case. Hopefully, we are, have, um, audio. So, do a moment of silence for George Nutter, brother of former school committee member Gerald, Jerry Nutter, cousin of special ed teacher Tina Nutter. Okay, I'm sorry, somebody, it is going through. Uh, retired elementary teacher Mary Ellen Pono, nephew of the late Walter Nutter, school adjustment counselor, high school teacher and cousin to former school committee member Clement McDonald, and a moment of silence for Margaret Martin, mother of school committee member Connie. Thank you. Subcommittee meetings. Uh, first one was seven one, we had finance subcommittee report. Uh, that was gonna be delivered by Ms. Martin, she'll present that at the next meeting. Uh, seven two, the curriculum instruction subcommittee was canceled, and then seven three, the equity and access subcommittee was also canceled this week, so, uh, they'll be rescheduled at a later date. Uh, eight, reports of superintendent, eight one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're pleased to report that with our update to the COVID update, uh, at the onset, uh, this week, we started with three thousand students full-time, in-person learning. The COVID data is continuing to cooperate to continue to move forward with the committee's reopening schedule. Uh, three thousand students back in school full-time is a significant milestone, given the, uh, given the rhythm of this year, I'd say, so it's certainly something to show progress, and with the, with the challenges of this year, I think certainly that progress is worthwhile to note. With that, uh, Dr. Hall, if you could, uh, the COVID, uh, data monitoring report.
Jeffrey, could you put that up, please?
Yes, one moment.
Um, so, uh, as we've been doing, uh, since, um, let's see, August now, we've been reporting uh, every week, um, and as you can see, the numbers, uh, keep going down and down and down. We're now down to four point, uh, two eight, and we haven't been, uh, that low, um, since, um, before Halloween or mid-October, so, and we're making progress, but we'll continue, uh, to, uh, look at these numbers and update, uh, the committee. Next slide, please. So I moved this slide up, uh, if you want to look at the numbers that are coming, um, over the next few slides for a particular school or for a particular policy, you can go right to this, um, website, and it's updated on a weekly basis. Next slide, please. Here are, are quarantine numbers and our positives, and again, I'd stress that the quarantining is actually good. It shows that our systems are working, that we're quarantining people to prevent spread out of an abundance of caution. Next slide, please. And here are some of the individual school numbers, and again, these are available at the website. Uh, next slide, please. There are some more schools. Next slide, please. And here are transportation central office numbers, and, uh, next slide, please. Uh, so, uh, we're having, um, some, we're, we're doing pools very well, in my opinion now. We did have a pool, uh, today, um, where results come back. We did have, uh, we tested seven hundred and thirty-three, uh, children and staff members over the last two days, and we have an additional run, uh, tomorrow. Um, we had three positive out of seven hundred and thirty-three tested, which is, and math teachers, correct me if I'm wrong, one out of every two hundred and forty-four, um, were positive. So I think that shows, uh, that we're doing well, and additionally, we're doing testing to make things as safe as possible, uh, but I think it demonstrated, at least this week, and we do have one more day left, uh, that there were few positives within the school of those, uh, that were tested. Uh, so again, you have to, we have to have a consent form filled out. We're getting a lot more in, uh, but it benefits everyone, uh, if you can consent to have your student, uh, tested, uh, for everyone, and it will definitely help us open up more seats to more people that are being tested. And the state.
Doctor Hall, a quick question, before you go on. Uh, does the pool testing include teachers, or is it just students?
Yes, teachers as well, so we had
Okay.
three hundred and eighty-seven students and three hundred and forty-six staff members of the seven hundred and thirty-three so far this week.
Thank you.
So, in another development, we're presently using two teams that are going, um, out to these schools and dividing them up. We hope to add another team, so we can go from, um, rushing through four days to a solid three days with three teams operating on each day. So we hope to roll that out next week to try to become, or improve even more. So, again, the, the general gist of this is, those that consent, there's, you know, six to eight in the pool. If the pool comes back positive, those six to eight, uh, all get, um, retested with a rapid test, and we can quickly determine which one out of the pool was positive, and then we run our close contact, um, contacting from there. So as a result of those three positives, um, we ended up at one school with, um, thirteen students and five, um, staff members that either had contact with the student on the bus or in the classroom. So we are quarantining out of abundance of caution, even though there's just one positive. Uh, next slide.
Doctor Hall?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Oh, um, where, where do people fill out the consent form for the, um, to, you know, participate in this testing?
They can, uh, contact, uh, their principals, uh, for that, to have it emailed, or they can even call in and consent.
Thank you.
Well, it would stop the classroom, though, obviously, right?
Uh, the parents will have.
They wouldn't know to contact their principal, so the teacher must be giving them paperwork and telling them to contact the principal?
Correct, Mayor, yes.
Does this, does the, do the teachers have paperwork that they're handing out or mailing out?
I was handled by the principals, um, Mayor, and/or the assistance of the staff there.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Let's see. Um, so here's some information on the pool testing again, and everyone's, um, chipping in and been great with this, I think it's a great development for the school system, that we're having all this testing to help, uh, make it as safe as possible, uh, for everyone, but, you know, we're stressing accurate record-keeping, 'cause if, for example, if you didn't know who was in a pool, uh, that would defeat the whole purpose, and we need consents, and we need to continue to try to get as many people as possible to participate in this. And again, the state was good enough to continue this all the way up through April vacation. After that, uh, the committee is gonna be presented with some budget decisions, uh, to decide whether or not to sustain it, which I suspect would be a good idea, but again, that's up to the committee. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. There is some, uh, participation, uh, that we put together when these slides came out. Um, again, we had seven hundred and thirty-three tested so far this week, so we're, we're, um, destroying those numbers, I would say, uh, going into the future weeks. Next slide. And up to two twenty-four, here are the numbers, but again, uh, with seven hundred and thirty-three over up till Wednesday, we're doing much better. Next slide. Next slide, please. And we did, we did go over this, so if there is a positive, we're, um, running the, uh, rapid tests and getting those results back within fifteen minutes, and acting efficiently to quarantine and notice, uh, parents who are affected by their child who has to quarantine, and again, we, we have five staff members who are also quarantining, uh, because of a positive today as well. Uh, next slide. Alright, so here are the, um, the numbers that was voted on by the school committee. Initially, the plan was to come, um, back, um, earlier, but the school committee then revised it to, uh, the days on the chart, um, pursuant to the numbers in the meeting with the Board of Health. But on March first, the previous twenty-five, uh, percent came back, and I think, and Dr. Boyd will talk to that, but approximately three thousand children are now successfully back in school, and on April first, the committee voted to expand beyond that, and there's gonna be a presentation on that later. Uh, next slide, please.
Um, can I jump in with a quick question? So, when they do the test, what's the first test called, the, the pool test? Is that the Borax test, or is that after?
Uh, the, uh, the Abex test is being done, the rapid test, Mayor, is confirming who is positive or not. I, I don't recall.
So, I'm sorry, so by the, in the report, if they do a pool testing in the classroom, um, say there's ten participants in the, in the pool, um, if they do the test that's cool, and it comes back positive, they immediately do the other test, the rapid test, on those ten participants to see who actually tested positive?
Right, so today, for example, there were three pools throughout the district, where one sample, uh, came back positive in those three pools, and those, um, people that were in that pool were all given the, uh, rapid test, which the results come back in fifteen minutes. So we were then able to, then able to determine who was positive amongst each of those pools.
Okay, and then, okay, so it makes it safer for everybody in the pool and everybody in the school. Okay, thank you.
And, you know, and this method, um, allows us to test, uh, a lot more people, and that's why they use pool testing.
Right, okay.
We've had, um, some great developments, um, with the vaccine, in my opinion. We've been putting out information, uh, regularly, but, uh, Circle Health and Senator Kennedy, um, were very helpful, uh, to us. We had a, uh, meeting set up by the Senator, and ultimately, Circle Health agreed to set aside a afternoon for two hundred and fifty of our, um, personnel, uh, who had two comorbidities or were over the age of, um, sixty-five. And it went so well, they then gave us another hundred, um, tests the, what, the next day. So we got three hundred and fifty, um, people through the site, and then we tried to get one more day, uh, but then the hospital opened it, uh, wide open. We put it out on the, um, website, and people were getting, um, scheduling tests, you know, a week out, and they are all filled up today, which is important, because the governor today released, um, starting on March eleventh, uh, those working in educational facilities, teachers and support staff, will be able to, um, schedule appointments as well. Uh, we immediately contacted Circle Health, and, uh, were told that they've gotta wait till supply catches up, so likely, we'll be able to have another special event for Lowell School's employees, but they've gotta wait for the supply to catch up. Two thousand people are already being, uh, vaccinated a week at the one hundred, one thousand one Tucket Boulevard site, and all those, uh, vaccines are already allocated to people. So we have to wait for the supply to catch up with the governor releasing the next section. Uh, next slide, please. That's it, thank you. Uh, subject to your questions, I don't have anything further on this report.
Any questions from the members?
I have a couple of questions, if I could. Thank you, um, I just wanna go back to the, um, I, uh, you don't have to go show the slide, but you had, I think it was slide eleven, you talked that twenty-eight percent of the students and thirty-five percent of the staff, um, have consented. Is that, are those numbers correct? Because that seems like a very low percentage to me. And I know the state was a little bit late, originally, we talked that we were gonna be able to roll this off in the middle of February. Uh, I think the date you gave us was February eighth, would have been the earliest. Uh, but can you ex, give us some idea why we have so few, uh, percentages of these consent forms in for this testing? Uh, we, were we distributing it only online or electronically for families to get it, or?
We were allowing, uh, many forms of consent to be given, some even, we went as far as to allow parents to call and, you know, take down the conversation, or some even received a email consent, but I really think, um, the slow, the slow increase is attributed to people are seeing, uh, at work, and, uh, how easy it is, and not, and it's not as invasive as the typical tests that I think we're all experienced with, and I think that's, uh, creating momentum, where we're just gonna keep going up and up, and it's gonna create a safer and safer environment.
Okay, okay, twenty-eight percent of the students and thirty-five percent of the staff, so you're expecting the staff are gonna get more on board with the test? I mean, this is like a key factor, and making sure that our, everybody's safe in school is to be tested, and we, we're offering the testing, and the percentages are just disappointing, so.
Those numbers, Mr. Artie, are effective as of last week, but, um, we had seven hundred and thirty-three participate, um, yesterday and today, and we have one more, uh, day to go, so I suspect we're gonna get well over, um, a thousand. Uh, so, we're continuing to improve on this, so the next.
Okay, so what does a thousand mean? You've got three thousand kids in school, how many staff? I mean, what percentage is a thou, and, you know, I'm not, I, I, I don't mean to be criticizing you, Dr. Hall, I, I know that everybody's working hard, but it just seems like, you know, we, we got the testing now, we need people to, you know, comply with it. So a thousand, how does that compare with the total number of people that we're talking about in the schools? If you're gonna do a percentage, apples to apple?
Probably a third, roughly.
A third, okay. So we'll be looking to see that number improve, obviously. And then my other question has to do with, um, the actual vaccination of our staff. Um, I was, I was told that, uh, I think somebody's, I'm hearing some background noise, okay. I was told that when the Lowell police and firefighters were vaccinated, that it happened here in the city, and I know that we've got some cooperation with Circle Health. Have we communicated with our partners on the city side about trying to get those, uh, our staff, like, at the front of the line, or at least that they'll be able to do it in Lowell? Because if they have to go to some mass vaccination site, that's gonna be time away from school and all those things, so I just wanted to know, what are some other efforts, that, had there been other efforts to try to get the vaccinations for our staff, um, make it easier for them to do it here in Lowell?
Sure, Doc, the superintendent and I took your direction, or the committee's direction on that, and, um, talked, uh, with the city manager, um, the Board of Health, uh, the Health Department, and we attempted to get shots delivered, so to speak, to the schools to make it easier. There were a lot of logistical problems explained by Circle Health that prevented that, and unlike phase one with the police and firefighters, where the government allowed, uh, the cities, uh, to run that, they're not allowing that with phase two. So, but, uh, we did have a breakthrough, and Circle Health agreed to that teleconference, uh, with us, and they promised, we asked, can you go to the schools? And they assured us it'll be much faster to come to the site, and if you've talked to any of those three fifty that went to the site last week, they are reporting they were there in and out in under, uh, twenty minutes with the wait time. So I'm hearing reports that it's super efficient there, and probably, uh, one of the better sites, uh, within the state in processing people. They're doing, uh, two thousand shots a week, and, um, Ms. Howie is very responsive. She's the C O O, uh, there, um, will, you know, any question we send over, is answered within five minutes.
Well, that, I mean, that's positive, then, as long as we can do it in Lowell, I, I think that's important. I don't understand why the state, on one hand, tells us they want our children back in school, but on the other hand, they don't make it easy or prioritize getting vaccinations for our staff. I, I think that's frustrating. Um, okay, that's all that just jumped out at me, thank you.
Thank you. All set with that report? Okay, next report, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, this is a highly, um, important item for this evening. So, it's, it's just a report, there's no action required, but we do need the committee's guidance, 'cause this will come back to you on the seventeenth for approval of the addendum to the reopening plan. Ms. Desmond is gonna, uh, share with you the current parameters that we're operating within. Uh, she'll share with you the differences between the current guidance and what that means, as well as the guidance that's been suggested, that the commissioner is gonna be adopting here in the near future, that you've seen reported in the headlines about full reopening of elementary schools in April, and what that means. So Ms. Desmond will share with you, uh, what those parameters are, what we're working towards, what it would mean in each possibility, and what we're looking to hear from the committee is some clear guidance that can drive our planning towards your approval of the addendum to our reopening plan on the seventeenth, that'll then ultimately yield our expanded reopening in April. So I wanna pause and just make sure if there's any questions on kind of the, the task at hand, and then I'll hand it over to Ms. Desmond, 'cause this is gonna be really important to make sure we can get the committee's guidance here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through the report first.
Alright, Ms. Desmond? All right, Ms. Desmond?
I want to make sure that it, you can see it only because I'm, I'm sharing my, my screen. Um, is that, can you see it?
It works, Ms. Desmond.
Okay, just want to make sure it's. So this presentation is uh an expansion of the presentation, the hybrid presentation that I um presented a few meetings ago, so um with updates. And so recently, um on February twenty-third, uh Governor Baker spoke about the importance of returning students to school. And um in the presentation, he emphasized some, to return to some sort of in-person learning, whether it be a hybrid or a full-in-person model, um encouraging elementary schools in particular. With that, he also uh stressed the importance of layered mitigation approach to in schools, which we have been practicing, which is physical distancing, um hand hygiene, sanitizing, and contact tracing. Also uh focused on was the importance of comprehensive testing, such as the pool testing that we're engaging in currently. And then finally, um he mentioned that the vaccine was not necessarily prerequisite to everyone returning to in-person learning. At the same time, the Commissioner of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, Commissioner Riley, spoke about plans for uh him asking uh for authority to reverse the pandemic education changes that were made in March. Um, he also mentioned uh the fact that the health metrics have continued to improve and um the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, looking at the hybrid and remote models and whether or not they would be able to continue through the rest of the year or if we would be going back to a more traditional format as a state. So again, they're looking at bringing back elementary students first, middle and high school, but before the end of the year from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and then also providing parents with an option to uh keep their students, their children, home remotely through the end of the year. So as a district, we have been looking at potential hybrid models, as I mentioned a few weeks ago. And uh just as a recap, we have seventy-five percent of our students that have not been in person this year at all. Those students' uh families have been surveyed as to whether or not they would be interested in coming back either in person in a hybrid model or something else, or if they would rather stay home um and stay remote, excuse me, for the rest of the year. Um, so no matter what hybrid model we look at, we would have to look at cohort models um so that half the cohort would come uh during a certain time and then the other half would come at a different time. And so um we, I explained in our last meeting, the two-three hybrid model, where cohort A would come on Monday and Tuesday, everyone would be fully remote on Wednesday, and then cohort A would be fully remote on Thursday and Friday. And then cohort B would be fully remote on Monday, Tuesday, everybody would be remote on Wednesday, and then cohort B would be in person on uh Thursday and Friday. We're also exploring some districts, um not as many around here, but some districts in the area have been doing a one-week-on cohort model and a one-week-off cohort model. But um many of the districts uh locally have been using the two-three hybrid model. So our data, uh the Data and Accountability Office did survey families. The results uh are uh not representing individual students. It was a family's response. Uh, and so the results are really more of a guide than um very specific. Um, but if you look at each school, it seems to be uh a, a pretty even split in many places as to how many families would prefer to stay remote and how many families would prefer in person. There are some outliers that the number is significantly higher, looking to um engage in in-person instruction versus remote. So school leaders have this data and they are uh looking into more specific information um by family outreach, through out, through family outreach. Um, so the timeline. Yes.
So um what are we, uh, what are we talking again for this? Like, what grades? Are we going all the way through high school or just certain grades when we first take a look at the re, at the um, at these models here?
So we are looking at all grade levels uh to look at all models. Uh, and that would include the, the, the possibility of um having perhaps um a staggered uh restart in April, depending on the grade levels. Uh, so we're just, we're looking at all options right now.
Okay. Is um, are we still renting any space out in our buildings, like the freshman academy?
Dr. Hall, can you share the update there?
Uh, yes, uh Mayor. So um the organization was given uh notice that we're going to need the, to use the freshman academy um in April. So, you know, pending the committee's decision, they're aware that we may need to fully utilize that.
Okay, thank you. And then one other quick question while we're going through this. I don't see anything about lunches. What's the plan for that? Were we gonna take a look at an option to go um school till lunch release, so we don't have to deal with the distancing in the cafeterias?
Mr. Mayor, that would, uh, we are evaluating that at a high school level. That's not a transportation requirement and students can uh dismiss and do their second half of their day or the couple periods after, after lunch uh remotely. That's a typical model that's been used across the state with uh, with that type of part, most or majority day in, in person and then the grab-and-go meals. Other than that, uh, we're planning for in-school uh lunches, just not utilizing cafeterias. Classroom feeding largely uh is what we'd be looking at. The middle schools might have some adjustment to that, just based on supervision, supervisory staff availability. Um, so yes, a- all models and the model you're referring to is currently under evaluation at the high school.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Desmond.
All right. So what we're looking towards uh here is you can see the timeline in front of you, but the guidance we're looking for from the committee is largely, what are your non-negotiables? And what are you, what are you desiring to make sure we can plan towards? What we're working towards is as men, as many students coming back in person as possible while maintaining the social distancing guidelines that are currently in place. You saw with the survey data, we believe we're going to get, be able to get pretty close to that. Uh, but we don't know for sure, meaning that we have students who want to stay remote enough that the students who want to come in person can come in person five days a week at the elementary grade levels at least, and we're looking at the middle school grade levels. But again, there's a big caveat there. We got it, we still have to plan for accurate numbers based on more than just families, but based on individual students. But that's what we're working towards. If we can't make that happen, then we would shift to the cohorting hybrid model. Now, the five days a week would then open up on set periods of time that will come back to you, meaning that you can't change your mind every day if you're choosing remote to start in April. You can't change your mind the next day and come in person. But we would set some type of interval, whether that be monthly um or, or so, that the committee would establish so that students could say, okay, I started remote here even in this uh reo- uh expanded reopening, but now I want to come back because the COVID data has even gone further. That's what, and then the high school would go to that uh hybrid cohort cascading schedule where they dismiss from in-person uh to the, at the lunchtime, if we can make that work. And we're still working through that plan, which is why we got to come back to you at the addendum on the seventeenth, because there's a lot of planning and a lot of work that still has to happen. Now, I, what would be uh important to hear is what are kind of the real non-negotiables for the committee? And what are the real desires for the committee so that we can plan uh accordingly? And bring back to you an addendum that uh is sho- is, includes all of the feedback we get from you. The commissioner may take local control out of this equation. If the commissioner changes what is allowed for uh to count a student learning time, we could be coming back to you with something that is not a lot, uh, does not require uh much consultation at all. But uh here, I see Mr. Dakota's hand. We are certainly looking for your feedback. No vote required here tonight.
Go, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, right? Mr. Yeah. Um, is there a deadline for parents to decide whether they want their children to be remote or in person? Is there like a drop dead date for them to notify you?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Desmond, what are we looking at in terms of the timeline there? Oh, is she frozen?
Well, at this, at this point, I believe that uh leaders, at this point, uh, school uh leaders are reaching out to the families to verify the data. And then um we will have more specific data uh moving forward. So that work's happening right now.
So there isn't a date, like, we have to notify this date in order for us to be able to plan ahead and, and, and have the right kind of staffing for, for, to go forward? So there's got to be a, a drop dead date somewhere in there?
We're expecting for all staff to come back. So what you would have here is that staff would come back. The difference is if students are coming back, they'd be in person, uh, but they'd stay in their class if they're remote. So that's a simultaneous teaching requirement. We can't seem, we can't build or plan around that. So if I have a classroom that is Dr. Gillery, uh, Ms. Turner and Ms. Desmond, and Dr. Gillery's in person, Ms. Turner's choosing in person and Ms. Desmond's remote, they all stay in my class and the simultaneous teaching requirement is still, is then required. So we got, what we have to do, Mr. Dakota, is we got to build out more details on our uh model so we can actually communicate to families, here's what you're choosing, whether you're choosing in person or remote. This is what you're getting. Because some families, those, those parameters uh matter. Whether it's transportation, whether it's two days a week, five days a week, what those parameters are matter for their decisions. We already got the survey data in that allows us to do the planning that's broad. Then we need to go specifically to families and say, here's the model. This is the determination. We've got to make sure that we can uh, we can consider you for that. There's a, so that's, that's the best details we can give because we got to build out the model first and then we got to go, go from there. We'll have that full addendum to you though on the seventeenth.
Okay, and, and one, one of the, well, actually two of them, but one other thing here, uh, as far as classroom teachers and, and subject matter teachers, what about uh specialists? Your art teachers, your music teachers, your phys ed teachers, health teachers and so forth? Uh, is there a plan going forward with them?
Yes, the only teachers that we wouldn't anticipate coming into the building are those that uh carry and continue to carry medical except, medical exceptions uh post-vaccine. Uh, so if a stu- if for some reason there's a medical exception required and the teacher hasn't had a vaccine, then those would be the only people that we would expect to be remote. Otherwise, they'll be in person. Some of those, we're also working to eliminate as much movement for students as possible. So for some of those specials teachers, they would be pushing into classrooms instead of the students moving amongst their classrooms. Uh, so usually, many of our allied arts teachers, for instance, they'll have multiple class changes during the course of the day and they stay in their classroom. In many cases here, we'll be limiting that as much as possible. So if possible for them to push into classrooms and the teacher moves instead of the kids, that would be the direction we'd be looking to build.
Okay, to follow up on that, um, do you think our parents and, and students, that are more likely the parent, uh, understand that the children going back into school uh in proba- in some probability, more probability, you know, more often than not, might be changing teachers and classes?
We're going to work to avoid that as much as possible, which is why we're saying the simultaneous teaching is unavoidable. There could be some of that, um, Mr. Dakota, but we're going to be working to avoid that as much as possible. That's kind of one of the non-negotiables that we're trying to build around is continuity for the teacher-student relationship and the continuity for classes. Uh, there are some cases where that would occur. For instance, if a, if a kid is moving amongst our current twenty-five percent uh model to the seventy-five percent model, depending on how that model shapes, then of course, that would have to be a shift of a classroom. But otherwise, we're working to avoid it. The high school can't have those shifts at all. Those shifts can't take place at all for a high school roster, and we're working to avoid it in the other classes, other grades as much as possible.
Okay, and the last, uh, the last thing, uh, because part of the, of this report that we, we just got uh refers to our co- our commissioner. Uh, does, does anyone know if the commissioner has gotten his vaccination? Just a one, just wondering. I don't, you know.
I'm not sure how.
He's telling all of us that we can just have our teachers go back and they don't have to be vaccinated. Well, this is a surprise, because he had his vaccination. I'm wondering if he probably has.
Okay, good question. The boy?
I, I don't, I have, I don't know.
No, I know. We can continue. Don't have.
Oh, all right, all right. There is a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a, so, any others? This is really just an open forum. Let's hear from you as, as committee members uh so that we can build it out. We're going to try again, build for as many students and as many days in person as we possibly can. The one variable we know we can't avoid that we've been trying is the simultaneous teaching. And I will tell families, I'll tell teachers, we understand that that's going to be an extraordinary challenge. Uh, however, I, I believe in the greatness of our teachers. We have great teachers. Uh, we're going to work together to support one another, to move in that direction. Everybody's going to have to allow a bit of grace to our teachers as they're learning this uh new approach. But other districts, most other districts are doing it. And I know if other districts are doing it, our teachers, our principals, our schools can do it because I believe our, our teachers, our principals in our schools to be, be a level above the rest. Uh, but it is going to take some, some, some work there. So we're going to make sure we can support them, make sure we can support our teachers, make sure we can communicate to our families. Now, if we can avoid the cohort modeling, the hybrid cohort schedule, we're going to work to do that. We can't avoid it at the high school, but we're going to look at the K eight to see if we can. If the local control, local decision-making is still available to the committee, we'll bring back to you a more definitive plan on the seventeenth that again incorporates whatever feedback you provide. Um, but the commissioner is suggesting right now that that local control will, will, uh, he's going to be recommending that. He'll be pulling that local control in some way. There is a.
Any last answerable question, please?
Okay. Where are we with MCAS?
Dr. Gillery?
So, uh, good evening, committee members. Uh, right now, MCAS is still on the books for grades three through eight, uh, beginning in early March. I believe the administration window opens, uh, I'm sorry, I said March, April. Uh, April seventh, I believe, is when the window uh actually opens. So as of right now, our school leaders are continuing to, I think, through the MCAS impact um on their schedules as well as also access testing. That's another uh large portion of uh required testing that's happening uh within our schools now. So leaders are presently working through that with students that have returned. Um, but MCAS is certainly on their radar and on top of their mind because at the time we will be expanding, would be the time that the MCAS window actually opens.
Does anyone else see the foolishness of having that, that test being given in, in a year like this? Does anyone else see the foolishness of that?
We, we all do.
Administer the test.
It's, it's ridiculous, ridiculous.
You're doing it, you do it at home then, through the online?
It's an in-person assessment. I think it is a bit mind-boggling that we would be carrying forward with this during this, this type of year. But everything we've been told is that it's, it is required, so we are working towards it until we get told otherwise. Um, there is, we did pa- I just want to notify the committee, we did pause the presentation for these questions and clarification. But at any time, Miss, Miss, anytime the, no questions, Ms. Desmond will continue.
Sure.
I got a question.
Yep. Do you have, Mr. Yellen?
Thank you.
You're on mute, Mike. Is it muted?
I don't think he's muted, but I just can't hear him. My connection's bad.
School time.
There we go.
Got me?
Yeah, now we don't. Go ahead.
Uh, I mean, that provides more in-school time overall, more in-school hours, uh, I think, because you're not missing that a day. Um, but uh, I mean, looking at the numbers, um, do we have to do cohorts? Like, why, uh, can't, is it, is it strictly distancing that's keeping us from getting all the kids that want to go to school in this, into the buildings? I mean, we're talking, we're talking about at least April and we have teachers getting vaccines this month. I mean, we're talking, we're talking about at least April and we have teachers getting vaccines this month now.
Distancing is the biggest variable, Mr. Dylan, that we are uh working through, is, is the social distancing.
With three feet, with three feet of distancing or anything lower than six allow us to get the, the interested kids going in person, in person?
Ms. Desmond?
Well, I think at this point, we're looking at all models. Uh, so we are, we're really planning for all models. And as we get closer to the date, I think we'll have a better sense of, you know, what we're, what is, what is possible for us to be able to do. Uh, but we're, we're not just focused on one particular hybrid model. We're looking at all and we're planning for all.
Sure. Now, well, just looking at the numbers of, you know, uh, of responses, um, on that survey, even though, you know, the numbers aren't right on there. I mean, you know, if we're talking about low numbers of kids want, or or lower numbers than in the fall of kids wanting to return, then why can't we get them all in the building? You know, a, and we're spending a lot of, a lot of, um, you know, we're spending money in order to do a hybrid for what could be a couple of months. Um, and there's a lot of professional development that's gonna come with that. It would just seem logical that, you know, we could, we could make that happen somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback, Mr. Dylan. That's good feedback.
Alright, Ms. Desmond?
So as I said, we're, we're planning for all models. We wanna be fully prepared for whatever direction we end up having to go. Uh, so at this point, we've timed lined out a, a return for April fifth. And, and the reason for April fifth is April first is a, um, is a Thursday. And then April second is a, a, a no-school day uh in our calendar because of Good Friday. So Monday, April fifth is the date that we're looking for the return. Um, so if we timeline that out, uh, by March fifteenth, we would like to have identified all of the students', uh, families' decisions. For the groups that has been fully remote since the beginning of the year. And so as I said, uh, schools have been calling people to get the um very specific number based on the, on the uh earlier data that I showed you, which was. Um, survey data. Uh, then we are also planning, um, as a curriculum office for uh professional development, which will be offered the week of March twenty-second to staff. Uh, the curriculum staff have reached out to our area, uh, school districts that have been using hybrid models. To um hear what has worked well, what some of the challenges are. And then, uh, we are planning the PD to be able to help support all of our staff in navigating that form of instruction. Even if we come back to a full uh return, we will be still offering families the opportunity to stay fully remote. And so as a result, we do still have to provide instruction in a hybrid model to some extent. So we wanna make sure that everybody feels comfortable being able to do that. Um, we also are planning for some time for staff to be able to get into buildings and set up and prepare their classrooms. As you, as you know, our staff have not, the staff that are teaching fully remote have not necessarily been in the building and setting up their classroom as they would typically do. Uh, before the start of the school year. So we wanna make sure there's some time carved out for that as well. And then April fifth is that target date for return to in-person learning. Uh, the technology department has been uh going through the network server points. They've been checking to make sure that upgrades have uh been uh implemented. So that if we are in a situation where we have to live stream from every classroom at the same time, we know that we will be able to do that. So that work is ongoing currently, make sure that we are prepared for whatever model we end up having to implement. Uh, some of the schedule considerations that we're looking at for a hybrid model is, you know, making sure that we have similar schedules across the grade levels. Um, the one thing that we have heard from the school systems that are, have been implementing a hybrid model is there was some difficulty at the beginning of the year. Uh, in, in getting the schedules sort of adjusted. We have been fortunate because we have maintained a typical school day schedule in the remote setting. So that will help to more easily transition everybody over to the uh in-person learning schedule. Um, we also need to consider that, uh, based on the, um, the guidance that we just looked at from the, um, the governor. We still have to build in the mask breaks and the hand sanitizing and, and prioritizing, um, some of those, um, good health habits. And so we wanna make sure those are also built into the schedule for a return uh in April. And then also, we're looking at because, uh, the weather change, uh, in April, May and June, how we are going to be able to utilize outdoor space to help support. Um, you know, breaks and, um, perhaps some outdoor learning. So all of those things are being considered right now and investigated. Um, so some items for consideration, again, for us is we're, we continually track the, the latest guidance from the CDC, the governor, the Department of Ed. Uh, we're looking at the various models, we're, we're planning so that we can implement whichever model the, the, the committee decides is, is the best way to go. Um, we still have to consider the social distancing, transportation of our students that are fully remote if they're going to come back to in-person learning. Uh, the professional development schedule, the uh cohorting and the schedules for cohorting. And then also that uniqueness around secondary school. So, you know, we, secondary school students start to move between classrooms and that all has to be taken into consideration before selecting the model. So right now, where we're at is, uh, we've already ordered, uh, cameras for our, uh, teachers who will be returning in, in April. So that they can provide instruction in a hybrid format. Uh, we've developed PD videos as to how to set those up, how to use them. So we will be, uh, providing that to teachers. Um, survey results and getting more clarification around how people responded to those surveys. And, uh, reviewing implementation plans. Those are all the things that are happening currently, things that we still have.
Question. Um, what are the cameras again for and how many do we order?
Sure. So, um, we pre-ordered these cameras and we received them in January so that we would be prepared for this. Um, we have a, a thousand cameras. They connect directly to, um, the teacher's MacBook. And, uh, they're, they're small cameras, similar to like a GoPro size, so they can be moved around very easily, uh, in the classroom. They come with a tripod, so they can be set up. And, um, those cameras would allow a teacher to transmit what's going on in the classroom to a cohort of students that were remote.
And they're already in, you said?
Oh, yes, they came in in January. We, we pre-ordered them, uh, in preparation for this possible, uh, model.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so the things that still have to happen is, uh, we have to distribute the cameras to the buildings, uh, to the building leaders. So that they can, uh, start to get that, uh, out to the classrooms that are gonna need it. Um, develop the transportation plans, uh, ensure that the PPE is in the buildings to be able to accommodate the additional, uh, seventy-five percent. Uh, the teacher professional development schedule needs to still be, uh, solidified. Uh, the sessions are being developed right now and then, um, we will have to create a menu of, of days and times where it's offered. So that it works with everyone's schedule. And then, uh, again, we have to return by April fifth. And that concludes the, the overview of the presentation. And if, if there are any questions, then it's like.
There, there were some questions since it's a reopening plan. Was there some talk of, uh, is there talk of extending the school year? Or was that just somebody brought that up? I don't know.
Yeah, one thing that we're looking at, not necessarily extending the school year, but we are looking at expanding summer school programming. So previously, or typically, only some schools have summer school programming available. We're working right now to, uh, to plan for all schools having access to summer school programming. That'll come to you as part of the Ezra Two Plan. That'll be coming to you, uh, when we put forward that grant application. So you'll be seeing that come forward, uh, come forward in the near future.
Alright, so you, we're not expanding this for you, this.
No.
Whatever it is, the hundred and seventy days, whatever it was, and that's it.
That's it, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the members? Ms. Darting?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So, um, I guess my initial concern, and I had mentioned this, I believe, at past meetings about this survey that went out to families. Uh, what percentage of response have we got back at this point? Because everything is really driven by the number of families who are choosing to send their children back in. No matter what, uh, the commissioner attempts to do in terms of taking over local control. The bottom line is gonna be parents still have the choice. If they want their children to stay remote, they will. So could somebody please tell me what percent, percentage of response we got on the survey asking parents what they wanted?
Ms. Desmond?
Uh, Dr. Guillory's, um, department did the survey, so I'm going to defer to Dr. Guillory, if that's okay?
Sure, exactly. Uh, thank you. I will, I will get the exact number, but I can tell you what's happened, uh, as a result of that. So schools have, uh, reviewed their survey data, those, um, since it launched in early February. Some schools, uh, use various approaches. So, for example, some schools had staff members call each and every family, uh, to get their input. Um, e- even if they hadn't gotten a survey response. Many of them are also following up, uh, just to confirm what, what those survey responses are. So, um, there's a, a plethora, a wide range of what's happening there, but I can get the specifics on the actual survey responses in it, in and of itself. Uh, but the expectation is that schools are following up with each, uh, family in that seventy-five percent gauge. Because I think as Dr. Boyd said, this first step was just to sort of give us who, who's choosing to be in and who's choosing to be out. Um, but once the specifics come down, as Ms. Desmond, Chief Desmond said around the, the specifics of the model. Then we know that families may choose or want to, to adjust their, uh, decision based on that. So, uh, schools are following up intimately with each and every family.
I do think that that is gonna be a critical compo, critical component of what our options are. Uh, so I think it's very important. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that they're doing follow-up. Um, I've been hearing, you know, from some schools, very little response to the survey. So we're kinda shooting in the dark a little bit in terms of trying to figure out what we're gonna do. Um, I also think that there's gonna have to be some flexibility at the building level. For instance, if you have, um, uh, two, two first grade classrooms and one class is evenly split, split. Twelve of the kids wanna come in and twelve wanna stay remote. Okay, that makes sense. But what if the other first grade class, uh, all twenty-four of the kids wanna stay remote? Or twenty-two wanna stay remote and two wanna come in? So I think that it might make sense to give some flexibility at the building level. Once we have a better idea of what those numbers look like. I also think transportation has been a huge, uh, stumbling block from what I'm hearing. Many of our families, if they're not offered busing, it's not gonna be an option to bring their children back into school. And I wouldn't wanna make that be, again, that becomes an equity issue. Um, if you're not a family that has transportation, like in my family, we were a two-car family. We had some flexibility for one of us to drive or pick up. And so I, I am concerned about the transportation piece. Um, if I could go, I'd get a couple of other things that have been in my mind.
Yep, go ahead.
I do, um, I, I've, I've heard people concern, I very much support the idea of those twenty-five percent staying in school five days a week. You know, that our commitment to those kids, we were only able to give them, I think, three weeks, right? And then we had to go remote because of the numbers. But I am hearing concerns, if we ended up with that two, three hybrid, how would we be able to clean on those days if you have those five kids in? And, and, and you don't have to answer that out, but just something to be thinking about. Um, I do also like the idea, if the model supports it, when we get the interest back from our families. Of having the kids who are in-person, in-person five days. I agree with you, Dr. Boyd, uh, the two, three hybrid thing. Um, it's difficult and I, I, I would prefer that, you know, if you're in, you're in, and if you're remote, you're remote. As much as we can do that, recognizing it's gonna be a huge challenge for our staff to do simultaneous teaching anyway. Um, so I mentioned the transportation. I still go back to what has been an ongoing concern for me through this whole process, uh, which we never actually got the report that gave us the specific. It's only anecdotal, the inconsistency in class size. And I, I hear, I'm hearing from families and from teachers, they don't wanna be separated from their kids. There are those relationships, so I understand that's been a value of the administration. But again, there's gotta be something to help those people. Uh, and I'll go back to that, uh, use a, a kindergarten example, the class I heard that had thirty students and one that had ten. It's just, I don't think it's fair to the kids or the teachers that are in those overcrowded classrooms. Um, those are just a couple of things that are kind of at the top of my mind. I don't know that we have to, once you have a clearer sense on who those families are, not only by the school, but by the level. Like, how many fourth graders are gonna wanna be back in and, and how many second grade? Once you have a better sense, I think you can look at your facilities in a, in a way that maybe would be able to work. Because I do value staying with the CDC guidelines, meaning all the mitigating factors, including the six-foot distancing. Um, I think that it is important because even if they start vaccinating our teachers March eleventh. Um, we know it's gonna be a, a while out before everybody has that opportunity to get their first vaccination. And I, I think that, that's important. I'm sorry, that's all I've got right now, but if I think of something else, can I ask again?
Sure.
For some time. Thank you.
Mr. Dylan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Boyd, am I, um, correct in, um, assuming that if, you know, if we're using a camera model? Um, that some of those class size issues may be taken care of? Or, or at least, you know, I mean, we know why, we know why the class size issues exist. It, it was an impossible situation, uh, to overcome and nothing about this whole scenario was perfect. We keep bringing up the class size situation. Um, I just, I don't know why, but, you know, can, can some of those things be, um, mediated by, uh, the camera? Style of teaching that we're moving to?
Yeah, the, it'll, it'll mitigate the number of kids that are in the room because, at one time, because you're gonna have some kids that are remote. So it would, it would do that for sure. Uh, there'll be fewer kids, but it wouldn't solve, um, what I think Ms. Doherty's saying, it's just the total number of kids that, that, that the teacher's responsible for overall. So, um, I think both factors are still there. It's just, there, yeah, so, Mr. Dylan, you're right. It'll lessen the number of kids that are in the physical space, but it won't lessen the number of kids that the teacher's responsible.
Sure. Um, you know, the other thing, um, the only inequities that are going on right now are the fact that we're not providing every kid with an in-person education. You know, so we can talk about how every one of these plans will, you know, uh, you know, it's not equitable, it's not, you know, for one reason or another. None of these plans are perfect. Almost nobody's happy because i- it's difficult for everyone. Uh, the, the biggest inequity that is going on is we're not providing every kid with an in-person education. And we need to continue to work that way. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glock?
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to hear that, um, you know, we'll get the number on the survey responses, but really in essence, we're, the, the effort is being made at every school. To really get one hundred percent participation because that is required to make decisions, um, in how folks, you know, continue in the school year. Um, I, I agree. I think, uh, with, we, we need to get students back into classrooms. Um, you know, information continues to come out about how important that is. While we know that some families, many families, as we even see from the survey data here, that many families are going to opt to continue in a remote setting. But we do have many families that want some sort of in-person. If the in-person available is two days a week, I think families will take whatever in-person is available at this point in time. Because something is better than continuing in remote if, if they feel, in fact, it's important and they, they want their children back in school. Um, the question about transportation, you know, while it would be wonderful to have more transportation available. We know that's a major, you know, major, it was a major issue when we were working to get twenty-five percent in, in school. It was part of the survey that was one of the questions that was a factor, um, in, in even considering, you know, back to school in person for our families. Um, you know, while i- it is a factor this year, that, that just, it, there's not a lot of, um, wiggle room. Um, so I think it's important that we continue to plan, uh, you know. For the hybrid model, you know, for our middle school and high school especially, you know, and, and elementary based on the survey data. And the responses that principals are now collecting, um, from families who may not have participated in the, the survey. Uh, if, if it moves forward that the commissioner says. Uh, if, if it moves forward that the commissioner says we need to get our elementary school students in five days a week, then, then, then I guess that's what we have to do. But I think at this point, we, we need to get students back in the building into classrooms as soon as possible. Um, and so I would say we make every effort to move that forward. And if six feet of distance is what we've continued to say, maintaining social distance. Let's do that. Um, but it does require then that, um, that teaching gets both, you know, in-person and remote at the same time. So I, I support the recommendation in terms of moving forward to hybrid. Um, I think the timeline, you know, it's as quick as it, it has to be just because we're, you know, we're already into March and we're. Aiming for, you know, we're people returning on April fifth. So, um, so I just, I think, you know, continue, you know, working towards that date and get as many kids in as that, that, you know, can be on that day. Um, in the capacity that we can have them there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I agree with, uh, with Ms. Clark. Um, I, I think. I know we've got to get our kids back into schools and, and, and however many days. If it's just two days, then it's two days, but it, it can be five days. That'd be even better. Um, that would be ideal. Um, but we, we've got to keep everything else in, in mind, the safety of the kids, the safety of the staff. Period. That's it. Uh, so I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is, um. You know, I would. I want to see as many kids get back into the classroom as possible. Um, I think we'd all do. Um, I think transportation, we got to try to figure that out. I know right now. In the scenario we have. Um, there's kids, uh, at certain schools that. Are unable to get transportation. I think that needs to be looked at right now. Whether it's an extra bus route and a loop. Where, um, we pay for an extra loop. And they pick up these, uh, handful of kids. Better to be a half hour late to school than not have access to the school. And I think that's a priority we should be looking at tomorrow. Um, for these, uh, twenty-five percent of kids that are in school right now. Um, so I look forward to the next report. I mean, I think we all want to get these kids back in. Hopefully teachers will have at least one shot, uh, by then. And, uh, working on their second shot unless we get the Johnson and Johnson. Um, vaccine. And the only other thing is, um, I did get a, an update on some. Covid results, uh, the testing results. Somebody wanted me to mention that, um. We should be looking at, um. What she said, the Covid in the schools is something that really isn't spread much. The spread is very minimal in the schools and that's what we should be stressing. So, um, sure, you're going to have somebody that, um, has Covid and doesn't know it. But it's the spread that we want to make sure we're, we're emphasizing that the spread in the schools is very minimal. So that's all I had to add. Mr. Dillon, did you have something else? Did you have a hand up?
Yeah, I, you know, I lost it. I, I'm. Um, I, no, thank you though. Appreciate it.
All right.
I, I have something else if I could.
Sure. Mr. Arnie?
Um, I had a question about, you know, we have April vacation in the middle of all this, so we're looking at. I think it's like five weeks or six weeks of school. So. Again, it's going to be important that we, uh, get as much accurate information as our families so we can plan. Well, you know, get that information right away so we can make the appropriate plans. But my question has to do with. What happens after April vacation? Are we going to be quarantining our, anybody who leaves the state, our staff? And, and how are we going to manage that?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Doherty. Uh, we're not expecting that those types of restrictions will still be, will still apply based on the message we're hearing from, uh. From the commissioner in the cases of our schools. So we can't say, uh, related to others, but what we're hearing from the commissioner. Is that this, he's working towards a full return to school, uh, in April. So we would anticipate that the, the quarantine requirements because of the traveling during the vacation. Um, we'll have to get the guidance on that, but you would have to, I think logic would say if he's saying full return to school. Um, then he's not, he's not requiring an, an additional requirement of, of quarantining, but we'll have to wait to see what kind of guidance is provided. You are right with the dates and the dates in front of us, and I think there's an important one to mention. Uh, to the community. We keep saying April one, but if you remember, the committee established that just as a benchmark. Because April one is a Thursday, April two is no school. So the actual date is April five, so we don't have kids coming one day and then going right back out. So. Um, if the committee's okay with that, we've been looking at it as an April fifth date, which is the Monday. Um, unless there's some kind of a, a sentiment that is oppositional to that. And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'll just summarize what I heard and then see if there's any. So what I, what I heard is, um, the committee is fully supportive of the direction to maintain the teacher-student relationships. The continuity of the teacher-student relationships is essential. The committee understands.
Can I just add one thing though? Um, you know, Ms. Doherty has been making a, a valid point. Um, that situation should have been corrected a long time. If we have a, an imbalance of ten kids in one, ten children in one classroom and thirty in another. I don't know why that was never, um, addressed. But let's just make sure that going forward, we're not making the same, um, mistakes. So that's all.
If I could add, I think one way to remedy that is by having the staffing. And I know that's going to be a challenge for you, Dr. Boyd, but when, what I've heard about these, even these hybrid or the simultaneous teaching. Is somebody's got to be engaged with the kids that are remote. While somebody's dealing, and I know that would be a challenge, but again, it would goes back to what our families say, but that would help mitigate. If we have these really large classroom sizes.
We can study it. You're going to hear in Ms. Desmond's, or in Ms. Turner's presentation. That the, the staffing and the staffing needs that the committee's asked us to study are certainly very relevant and highly valuable to the model. But it's not a cost constraint. It's an availability of the staff constraint because we would actually need several hundred. Uh, paras or so that just aren't even available in the pipeline. And Ms. Turner will share that with you in a subsequent presentation. If the committee's okay with that, um, subsequent tonight. I'll tell you, the teacher-student relationships, understanding the caveat of class sizes. That the committee's aware, I just want to make you aware again, the simultaneous teaching where it's, it's, it's required. I can't, we can't remove the simultaneous teaching requirement while also maintaining the student-teacher relationship. Uh, uh, commitment. The more days and more students for in-person is the desire, as much as we can plan for more days and more, more students in. Hybrid, if we can't make the five days work. And while maintaining six feet of distancing, uh, we're going to work towards that. Um, I will tell you, what I'm hearing from our staff is that. They would rather avoid the cohort movement. The, you know, the cohort hybrid movement of two days and two days. If it means just a little bit less of the social distancing. Um, but I'm going to have to work, we'll have to work with our union partners based on that, depending on what we see from the commissioner. So stay tuned on that. And then the busing, uh, we've got a, we're going to study that and we'll work through, uh, the busing, busing requirements. Ms. Desmond, did I summarize everything that was heard? Is there anything else that you wanted to add to it?
No, I think that, that captured it.
All right. And then, uh, Dr. Gillery, you had updates on the MCAS window as well as the survey data.
Can I just jump in with one quick thing before Dr. Gillery goes, um? So can you double check on the transportation tomorrow? Because, uh, like I said, I've heard that, um, there are kids that, um, just can't get to school. So that needs to be looked at. Um, and I personally, I would think I, we'd have to maybe discuss it as a, a body, but, um. You know, we have to strongly look at maybe going to five feet.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just not going to fit all these kids back in if we stay at six feet. So I don't think another foot's going to matter. Um, private schools are doing it at three feet. And they've been in school all year long. So let's seriously take a look at the distancing. Um, because we got to get the kids back into school. And if it's a matter of, um, four feet, eight inches, then they should be back in the classroom. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Hall, can you split and take a note to study the busing? Um, and as a reminder for families, as we're talking about this. This is, does not affect the twenty-five percent will be twenty-five percent full-time regardless of this model. And families that are choosing remote, you'll have the option to choose remote, but it'll be your option, uh, going forward. There's, um. Dr. Gillery, did you share the full updates that you wanted on the, uh, to provide?
Oh, so I did want to correct the MCAS, uh, start window. It's actually, I said April seventh, it's actually April fifth. Is when that window opened, uh, for the grades three through eight. And also I, um, checked out, um. Um, based on this, uh, committee member Doherty's request, I reached out to our Director of Research and Accountability. And she, um, sent me a message back saying at this point. We have seven thousand. Seven thousand, five hundred, um, fifty-eight. Family, uh, responses to the survey. Um, and present at, at this point, the data's breaking down that forty, about forty-four percent are wishing to remain remote. And, uh, fifty-six percent are, are wanting to come back in person. But again, that's a family unit, so that may be a family of one child, that may be a family of seven child, but they, children. But they made that decision, uh, got that information back as the family unit. So again, this is why schools are reaching out because I think similar to your point, Committee Member Doherty. Um, if I'm a parent and I have children in three different schools. Uh, that's a level of impact, um, that I need to, you know, make a decision as a family unit. Uh, especially if they're at the younger grade. So that's why the schools are now following up, uh, doing a deeper dive, uh, into that level of information. I think those are my updates, uh, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Gillery. That concludes the presentation. We do have the notes for next steps. We're looking forward to continuing the planning and families. We're looking forward to continuing to bring more students. Uh, back into our school buildings. Uh, incredible work, staff, teachers, uh, principals, the board staff in our schools. Really proud of our schools, really proud of our families, um, really happy to say that we're starting to, to turn the corner here to get more kids back in.
Okay, thank you. Personnel report?
Uh, the personnel report's in your, uh, packet. Uh, Dr. Hall's available for any questions.
Good. Dr. Hall. Yeah. Dr. Hall, the, um, new hire, is that the position for the? Um, financial, the, uh, person we put in the, um. For payroll or is that a different position?
That's the payroll leader, uh, Mayor, with a few additional.
Sorry. That's, that's the new person that's going to head up payroll? Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Yeah, I need a motion to, uh, accept the reports from the Superintendent eight-one through eight-three as reports of progress. Um. I'm voting for my, seconded by Ms. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're on to new business, um, kindergarten reassignment calls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's, uh, this was one of the policies that was going to be at one of the subcommittee meetings. So you have a couple of options here. We wanted to share it with you. We do have a deadline of approval by the next committee meeting. So our recommendation is to go through it, uh, if the committee's interested in, as a first reading. Or the committee could choose based on the fact that you're going to get your subcommittees established here. Uh, today, you could choose to just move this to a subcommittee at a, at a future date. Either is acceptable as long as we can get this commit, this policy approved by the next meeting. Uh, first reading tonight or move it to a subcommittee. We're open to the, uh, committee's suggestion.
All right. I would recommend that we move it to a subcommittee.
I would, I would appreciate that. Um, you know, we had a death, you know, one of our committee members. Had a death and that's why we didn't, we canceled those meetings this week, but I think it's a very important topic and we should. Do it as we had planned to do it in subcommittee. We can go over the details and the questions and then before the full committee.
Okay.
That would be my.
Um, anybody else? Andy?
Sure.
I agree.
Okay. The one thing I got to ask is I don't. I'm not kind of following, so on pages two. Like all the red that's crossed out, is that? Deleted or is that, what is that? I don't understand the report, I guess, really.
Ms. Phillips?
Um, Mayor's members, that is, um, the document track changes. And, um, red line. So all of the cross-out is language. We're recommending approval from last year's policy. Um, the black language is the language that you speak from that policy, um, just to continue. The history of, of last year's. So the strike-through language is no longer relevant. That was particular to, um, the pandemic.
So all the red line was, was, uh, in there for the pandemic?
If it has a strike-through, that was, um, the temporary policy.
All right. So. Again, this is, you know, just getting back into, so how big is the policy then? Like half a page? Cause only a half, there's only about a paragraph black, right?
Ms. Phillips, you're, you're, that's, it's a great observation, Mr. Mayor. Uh. Ms. Phillips, it's significant. There's significant, significant adjustment was made here for the pandemic itself. But there are implications of that, that you remove. So it's not as easy as, uh, just knocking it down, but it, it will become significantly less. Yeah, how big is it? Have you looked at it, Ms. Phillips, of how long the policy actually becomes?
Um, it becomes around two pages. Uh, but this is just for the reassignment of this year's kindergarten class. Um, so, so that extra language was for new to the, new incoming kindergarteners. Some of that language will reappear in next year's policy, but this is around reassigning the current kindergarteners.
Okay. All right. So why don't we send this to committee and we can go over it. So. Motion to send this to subcommittee by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Dillon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Fair student funding update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, we have a registered speaker, so why don't we let, let the speaker go first?
Sure.
Good. Okay. Um. Sure. No, you do it, Ms. Clark.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Monica Lundberg? I can see her on the screen.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes. Just state your name, please, and your address.
Yep. My name is Monica Lundberg. I live at twelve Alyssa Drive. Uh, I'm also a member of the school site council at my daughter's school. And I participated in the site-based budgeting process last year. If three points about this process I'd like to make, um, about the, um, the presentation tonight. First, I noticed that the waiting system has been tweaked this year to more accurately reflect our school's needs. Sorry. Kira, I need you to be quiet. I'm speaking right now. Children. Um. I'd like to point out that right now, the only representation in the waiting formula for students with disabilities is measured by IEPs. Not every student with a disability requires an IEP. There are additional students who receive accommodations only under a five or four plan. Based on school by school data from the Federal Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection. The number of students with five or fours but not IEPs represents approximately one to five percent of enrollment in our schools. Uh, I would suggest that the appropriate subcommittee or department consider ways to accurately provide for these students as well for next year. Second, um, there is a tension between the principles of equity and the principles of holding harmless. We're not starting from a blank slate. We need to consider how to first identify historic inequity and second remedy it. To explain what I mean in simple terms, say we determine that school A should get a thousand dollars by our, our waiting formula and school B should get eight hundred. If we simply give each of them what they need, that might appear equitable. But let's say then that school A and school B each historically received nine hundred dollars. Under the hold harmless, school B would now be getting nine hundred dollars so that they don't lose funds. That means they have a hundred dollars more than they need. So school A has what they need and school B has more than what they need. For a real data example. In the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year before fair student funding, and I got all of this data from the budget documents, um. In past school committee meeting packets. Uh, the ratio of students to allied arts teachers ranged across the district from one teacher for every fifty-nine students. To one teacher to every one hundred and twenty-five students. If schools are held harmless, they don't lose sta- staff, those gaps will persist. And the historically under-resourced schools will have to choose between. Filling those gaps or investing in innovation. That's not an equitable. That's not an equitable choice. Without additional investment in the schools that were historically under-resourced, the schools that had more will always have more. Now, I recognize that our budget is finite. However, I still believe that identifying where there are historical inequities is a powerfully important step on the road to true equity. We don't have to look at everything at once, we don't have to fix everything at once. But we can and should take steps to start looking. I would encourage the, again, the appropriate subcommittee to look into this and start collecting that data. Third and last, what reassurances will you give us that our schools' budget choices will be honored and implemented in a timely fashion? Fair student funding only works if the money actually gets spent on what we choose. Last year, the school site council I served on chose to, with the approval of this committee, spend some of our unlocked funds to add to allied arts teachers. This wasn't just about ratios as the presentation tonight discourages schools from using their funds for. We discussed adding a new STEM-focused class. Despite repeated assurances that COVID-related budget cuts did not come out of fair student funding dollars, the job listings for these positions weren't posted until February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. It would be one thing if this administration had transparently explained which choices could and could not be implemented due to COVID. But to tell us repeatedly, yes, you still got those funds, when we did not get the resources those funds were meant to provide is disingenuous. And combined with the language in this presentation that seems to discourage spending on staffing, makes me concerned that there are unspoken restrictions. If there are categories we are not allowed to spend on, please tell us upfront so we can make choices that our students will actually reap the benefits of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundberg. Joe, Superintendent?
Thank you, thank you, Monica. Always insightful. Good to see you. There's, uh, Ms. Turner's gonna share with you the presentation for fair student funding. The decision in front of the committee today that we're gonna be asking for is to establish the pool. You're not gonna be weighing in on the decisions that the schools actually make, but we need to establish the pool so we can get the money to the school site councils through the formula that will then come back to you as part of the larger budget. So we have some recommendations on what we can do to increase the school size of the pool so that we can get the money into our budget workbooks, which really, uh, Ms. Turner will share with the committee today. So there is an important action item for this item in addition to the update on fair student funding. So Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner, what filter do you have on your camera? Cause you look very clear compared to everybody else right now. Has anybody else noticed that on your screens?
Yep, I think, are you muted still? Ms. Turner?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to get my, um, best student presentation up there. You? Um, can I respond quickly to the three questions that Ms. Lundberg had?
Well, why don't we just go through the budget first and we'll do that.
Okay.
She made some good points and I think maybe we'll have the superintendent reach out to her too, so.
I spoke to her today, just so you know, so I just, um, but I, I'll clarify as we go through. So this first slide, um, I, um, it's a long presentation, most of it for your review for when you do have time. I know that we have some new committee members, so I wanted to include things that they may not have been exposed to. The three goals of the fair student funding was to have equity so that we can distrib, um, distribute the resources equitably using the weighted system. Um, one thing that Ms. Lundberg had asked is the five oh four students to be added next year. We added transient population this year and we can tweak that every year if we have to, if we find new ideas. But, um, equity is one of our key things, transparency. Um, we want everyone to be able to see where the numbers come from. Last year, after we went through the fair student funding process, I got many emails from people on school site councils that felt as though it still was not fair. I can use, um, like with the transparent system, I can use the enrollment and all of the student data to show where our numbers come from and why the schools each received what they received. And then the flexible system is allowing the, um, the autonomy and accountability to align with district strategies. So it's given the, um, the principals the chance to, um, to, you know, have more autonomy over their budget. This year, we're, we did it last year too. One of the fourth goals of fair student funding is to make sure that we have a stable environment. When Ms. Lundberg just referred to equity versus hold harmless, last year when we did the equitable thing where we invested, um, all of the, the numbers into a weighted system, we didn't wanna rock the boat so much for the schools that were going to lose stuff. We have to hold them harmless to a certain degree, not that we let them hold positions because they're not getting, we're not holding their positions or their supplies. What we're doing is saying, well, we don't want them to lose three hundred thousand dollars all in one year. We have to spread that over a number of years so that we didn't rock the boat for many of our schools. So we did pour more into equity this year and you'll see that soon. This slide is just showing that based upon the projections from the data office, we are expecting a two hundred and sixty student decline in this upcoming year, most of which is from the middle school and high school. I'm flying through some of the ones that are just, um, rehashing things from last year. This slide is an important slide. This slide is showing you that the fair student funding pool of dollars will increase by four million dollars in real terms if you approve or vote to do what we're suggesting tonight. Last year, the original pool was a hundred and thirty-seven million, which is this first column. We, the, the school committee approved the two million dollar increase, so there's that second column. Then we added the four point nine million dollar in step increases, um, and the one percent raise that was due at the end of last year. If the, the next two columns that are in like a yellowish green, that's the two million dollars if you approve a pool increase for chapter seventy tonight and an expected ESER supplement to the fair student funding pool. If you, what we're trying to do tonight is not take away the decision-making from the school. But when I was talking about windows of opportunity, here's an example. We need to get a decision from you whether you, we can proceed with telling the schools that they have two million extra dollars because their budget book's released on Friday. So we built the algorithm with the hopes that you will approve more investment into the school. If, um, schools, if you do, this four million will bring us up to a hundred and forty-eight million that's in the schools pool, which means they have the power over the, these funds. Um, the, this, this slide right here is just summarizing what we're looking for tonight. I'm trying to see behind these screens, I can't see. Um, the action items is, the action items that we're looking for are to ask you to vote on two decisions, the fair student funding pool increase and the ESER supplement. Decision number one, if we increase the fair student funding pool by two million dollars using the chapter seventy increase, um, you know, will give the schools more of their own spending choices per the fair student funding goals. That was what we agreed to do last year is to continuously increase what we offer the schools. Decision number two, of the seventeen point nine million dollars, we would like to give the schools a two million dollar, um, increase this year and next year. Per the discussion regarding the limitations due to the windows of time, making this decision is limited by time constraint. Despite not having presented our plans for ESER, we still need to request an early decision to allocate two million to the schools since the workbooks have to be released on March fifth, which is this Friday, so the schools will have time to plan. Why not more, you may ask? Um, the ten point three million in additional chapter seventy funds, their, their earmark for replenishing accounts such as the health insurance that was used for SO one, the contractual increases such as step increases, transportation rate increases and raises the added distribution rate. I had summarized this on a previous, um, presentation so that you understood that the ten point three is, you know, it evaporates quickly. Um, so we're still committed to increasing the amount of investments directly to the schools to empower them to make their own decisions. So we're asking for two million dollars from the ten point three to go directly to the school. The seventeen point nine million in ESER two funds, it has to cover two years of addressing learning loss. So such as extended learning time, professional development and district-wide support for schools. So we're also committed to increasing the amount of investments directly to schools by giving them two million of the ESER two funds for both years. This next slide is just a summary of, um, all of the things that we need to support the seven key principles for effective school funding system. Um, I'm not going to go through it because it's just rehashing what we've, um, what we had last year, but it's showing you what our goals are for, um, student funding, I mean, fair student funding. So some key considerations and watch out as we increase with school budgets, and I believe this is what Ms. Lundberg was referring to. Um, we're not discouraging people from investing in staff. But if we have a one-time source of funds and we invest in staff, it's unlikely that we'll be able to sustain that. So this was, the consultant actually brought this to our, to our attention and said it's something that's happening across the state, where people there, where trying to emphasize the importance of not making across-the-board class-sized reductions and then not be able to maintain it. So they want us to focus on long-term sustainability. Um, some key considerations, the bigger the increase that we have for the school, the more time and support they need for strategic planning. And that's why we're asking for these decisions to be made tonight so that we can release their budget books on Friday and they can have time to work with their school site councils to plan.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Um, so drew you, Mr. Superintendent to, um, the chief financial officer. I think it's way too early to approve the governor's budget, so I don't know why you would recommend us to to approve a number that we don't have set in stone. The ESER two money probably is more secure. That I could see us doing, but to vote on the first part is irresponsible. We don't have that increase set in stone. The number's gonna change when they go to committee. Could, could stay the same, but it could change. So any thoughts on that?
Yes, what we do is we have them build their budget with, like, so they plan with that in mind. If the numbers change, we would adjust the algorithm and then they could, um, just reduce. This has given them the opportunity, being that we think it's likely that they'll get it. Um, we are giving them the opportunity to plan, but they know that this is based upon the final budget number. We're just saying that if we do get it, we're committed to giving it to the schools to make a plan.
Well, wouldn't they do that anyways?
Not if they don't know they have the money, but I mean.
Well, we all know what the guess is, but we don't know what the number is, so. And what do you mean by they have to have their budget in by this Friday?
So the algorithm, yes, um, we have to release their algorithm, like their funding source summary and their budget workbook that we built through the funding, um, fair student funding process, those are getting released to the schools on Friday.
Do we always redo that this early in the year?
Yes, well, basically, since we started fair student funding last year, it was March sixth last year that we released the book. Again, this is just so that they can work with their school site councils and have a number to work with and plan. But we don't approve the budget, the final budget until, um, May. So we still, even if we say that we're, um, planning on giving the schools the two million dollars, it's only for planning purposes. It's not, we're, it's not a vote to commit to it, it's a vote to say, yes, you can move ahead and stop planning. But they do understand that if the numbers come in differently, then we have to change the entire budget in May. We'll have to reduce their, um, their fair student funding pool.
You won't lock your budget decisions in, Mr. Mayor, until, until the May? This allows the school site councils to weigh in on that decision-making so that they can do their processing, their planning, so that we can get you a budget by May. If for some reason the projection or the forecast is, is off, we'll make those adjustments. So this is based on forecasting to allocate this, this pool to them. Uh, if it can be afforded based on the forecasting being accurate, the commitment of the vote is that we'll hold to it to the school communities, that they'll have those dollars. Uh, but yes, they all know if it, if for some reason there's a change in the budget forecast, their budget could be adjusted prior to the school committee's vote.
Okay, can you?
So the next slide is just saying as a, a district, we have, um, strategic opportunities to leverage the one-time funding increases. Um, with the recommendation based upon the consultant working with many different districts and seeing what they're facing. Um, this is what I meant when I said we're not discouraging people from investing in staff. We're discouraging them from investing in staff that they may not be able to afford year after year. So what they, the consultants said their recommendations are is, I mean, our would be to include, um, to give more resources to the schools with the most significant COVID nineteen recovery need, to develop need-targeted models from the district level for all principals. You know, like for instance, increasing the investment in tutoring, opportunities in extended time rather than giving it totally to the schools and have them hire twenty paras when they may not be able to afford it the following year. Um, we can also use the funds to pilot innovative models that could ultimately replace the old ones. Or we can do district-wide investments into early literacy. This slide here is just a summary of what, um, showing what happens through fair student funding. The first year prior to fair student funding, ninety-nine percent of our budget was dictated by central office. The one percent that the schools did get to, um, decide on is if they got a forty-eight thousand dollar, you know, um, a pool of money where they say, we're gonna spend this on general supplies, technology, um, professional development, not district-wide professional development, their own school, um, professional development. This first year, uh, in FY twenty twenty-one, we jumped up to sixty-seven percent of our overall budget being directly in the hands of the schools where they get to decide how it's spent. Now, as a reminder from last year, the number in central, um, the number in the schools is higher than sixty-seven percent, but we control it. For instance, social workers, social workers are there for the schools, they're in the schools, but we pay for it out of central office funds. We don't give the schools the decision because we, um, we, it's a mandated guardrail where they have to have it. This current year, based upon the suggested pool, now it could change if we don't do it. If we did the four million dollar increase, um, it would jump up to sixty-nine percent in the hands of the schools. This is a summary, this slide is a summary of all of the weight and how much we are, we're doing for each of the, um, weight. Um, it's students from low-income families, we give extra money for that. Students experiencing homelessness is a brand-new one. As I was mentioning earlier, we can, um, adjust the budget next year to include five oh four, um, students. Performance need, English learners, students with disabilities and priority grades such as the transition grades, um, going into the fifth grade or going into high school are the two that we gave extra funds for. Um, the next slide is just a reminder of how equity, we pour more money into the weight system. And the policy side is how we maintain stability. If we see that there's too mu, too much swings in the, in the algorithm, then we'll put little rules in there called trans, transition policies. Like no school is allowed to lose on a total budget per pupil or FPE amount basis that exceeds X amount of dollars. Or a school is capped at three to four percent gain per pupil so that we don't take, like rob one school and take everything and go give it to another school and then have all kinds of, um, instability throughout the district. This slide here is showing, this is exactly what we're trying to do this year. The, when Ms. Lundberg mentioned the hold harmless, um, the inequity of having hold harmless. This blue line, the blue section shows that last year we had seven million dollars in hold harmless because it was our first year with fair student funding. We went down six million dollars to a point eight million dollar hold harmless policy. The rest of our investment, the sixth, the gray area is the base weight, we increased ten million dollars for base weight. The green area is, we did a, a four million dollar increase on need-based weights and baseline. So we did a major investment in equity this year. And we did a major decline in the hold harmless stability model this year. And yet, despite that, no school is losing money. This next slide is showing you more details. If you wanted to, if you find this stuff interesting, you can look and see that where we, um, all of the, you know, legend stuff on the right-hand side. Each of these things will show you how much we decreased or increased per weight so that you can see like we had a decline in economically disadvantaged students in the secondary grades, but we increased with the economically disadvantaged elementary students. So you're able to see all of the details behind that. The next slide is a summary of showing by school, all of the enrollment, most of the schools, if most of them have a decline in enrollment and expected. But despite that, they're all going up because we did the, uh, four million dollar investment. We assumed the four million dollar investment, so each school would show an increase in their budget. The average per pupil increase is four hundred and forty-six dollars per student. So each school would see a, a per pupil increase and an overall increase. Then there is an appendix. The appendix is showing you the details. Um, one sheet is to go over the questions that were asked by the school committee at the last meeting. One was if we could allocate funds to a parent summit. The chief of engagement is preparing the initial review of this so that we can determine costs and find the funds to cover such. One question was to request to have paras in all classes. Twenty-five percent of our total teaching staff are currently in person. The remaining eight hundred teachers are hybrid. So if we were to put a para in all hybrid classes, that would require hundreds of paras. This is not only an issue of affordability, but rather it is a question of whether or not we could find this many pa- paras to hire. We're currently aiming to hire the approximate fifty plus paras that are open currently, and we have only identified thirty-five possibilities. So we're planning to hire as many as we can think we can possibly recruit, rather than what we can afford. Number three, identify which costs are recurring. The next slide, only one cost is recurring, which is the registration software. The investment in technology is a one-time investment that would require a few replacements, but not a yearly recurring cost. The development costs are listed as recurring and non-recurring, since we'll always aim to have professional development, but not at the level that we're saying that we need right now with this, um, unprecedented which to remote. Since these are unprecedented times, the cost is much higher than usual due to the investment in technology. And then one of the other questions asked by, um, a school committee member was to identify which costs impact school reopening. The next slide, many of the costs include digital investment, COVID costs, air quality, supplemental staff, and professional development, all impact school reopening. Other costs such as facility improvements and online registration software would not necessarily impact school reopening directly.
Billy Joe, I think I wanna make sure we don't confuse the committee. Cause some of these go relate to their next vote and they haven't yet taken the action on the fair student funding pool. So I wanna make sure they can take the action on the fair student funding pool before you give them the information they need on the budget transfer. Uh, unless the mayor has a different, a different route. I don't, I don't wanna give them too much information, allow them to deliberate on the, on the fair student funding pool, given that's the vote in front of you, Mr. Mayor, I would think. Might be clearer that it could be more numbers, more numbers.
This was the last page of the presentation, the transfers are on another presentation?
Yeah, that's, that's right. That's right, so this, this data here relates to those, uh, the budget adjustment transfers, right, Billy Joe?
Yes.
All right, then they, that's, that's a diff- that's the next item, they haven't taken action on the first item yet. So, all right, so I'll take them back to that, can you take them back to the action slide where you're recommending?
Yes, so again, we, we have, we're asking for a $2 million, um, tentative promise to the schools that they would be able to, um, have $2 million if we get the $10 million in chapter seventy. And also a commitment that we would give them $2 million of the S R supplement for their own, um, planning purposes to work with their school site councils.
And again, for clarity, the, what they decide to do with these will also come back to the committee as part of your overall budget approval. So this is, this is just allocating the dollars out, uh, to the schools so that they can do their planning process. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna assume the question you're gonna ask might be, would this even require committee vote because you're not approving a budget? We could do it that way, but the consultants recommended that we allocate it this way just for transparency purposes for the community. So we've done it this way the past couple of years. Um, we could do the planning absent committee vote, but this is just the, this is the recommendation and what worked well in past years for transparency purposes.
And what do you mean by the consultants?
Ms. Turner, can you share? So we've been working for a couple of years, Mr. Mayor, to redesign, uh, and remodel our entire school-based budgeting process. So we've had, uh, consultants helping us to support that process. Ms. Turner, do you wanna talk a little bit further about education resource strategies?
Yes, so E R S is, um, is the nonprofit organization that has helped us with, um, going through this fair student funding process where we're not just giving every school the same amount of dollars. Where we build a weighted system and attract the enrollment by school and the different needs of each student and the students at each school. So that this, each school is getting a, the amount that's reflective of what their student need is. So we did that for the first time last year. And again, we're, I know that it, we're just planning and we won't do a budget vote or approval until May. But why we'd like to go step-by-step with you is so that the transparency aspect of fair student funding is that we're actually honoring it. We want it to be transparent to the community, transparent to the schools, transparent to the school committee. That we're increasing the amount given to the schools by X amount of dollars. So we're doing this step-by-step so that you see what we do all throughout this process. That's one of the highlights of the fair student funding process.
Okay, I mean, I would leave it up to the committee, but I would prefer not to vote on this tonight because, um, when the numbers come out, if they're lower, uh, you know, it, it basically looks like we're, uh, cutting. So I would say you should go on your assumptions to create your budgets, but we can't vote on, on money that we don't have, so. I don't know, are there any questions from the committee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
You want Mr. Dillon?
Sure, yeah, um, I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from on that one. I mean, but, you know, it's the same way that we did it last year. I mean, there was a, um, there was a cutback, if I remember, and, you know, principals and in school, you know, school site councils had to, you know, make more decisions later down the road, but it at least allowed them to have everything laid out the way that they would want it. And, you know, then make smaller decisions later. Um, I mean, you know, fair student funding is not fair enough. I mean, that's beautiful, isn't it? Uh, I mean, yeah, let's keep contributing to it, I guess. I don't know, I'm, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve.
I can use that motion.
Okay, um, Ms. Darney or Mr. Dakota?
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Dillon. I, I don't see the, that, any negative aspect to this, it just approving this going forward. Where we can give the, you know, each, each of our schools, we'll have an opportunity to make changes as necessary. If, you know, if, as long as they've got their plan in place, they can know where they can make the cuts or additions, the possibility could be more money could come forward. I'm trying to be optimistic here, but, but, you know, you just don't know. So I think we, we can, it's, it's not gonna hurt for us to just say, you know, let's go ahead and, and, and provide this information that we have so far. Uh, and, and knowing that it's a tentative one. It's not etched in stone, so I have to know that.
Voting for it, you are etching it in stone, so.
Right.
Uh, anybody else?
Um, sorry, I have my hand up, I.
I can't, everybody with the presentation up, so go ahead.
Um, I'm not against the concept of, of fair student funding. I, I have had concerns about the school site councils getting the support they need, how they're elected. I know we've had a couple of motions on professional development and making sure that, um, these people are clearly represented on their s- school's website with all that information, so I'm still looking to see that. I, I do say that I would have to agree with the mayor that we just don't know. We've seen the money change, uh, from the state. Uh, so I would be more comfortable, uh, not giving a stamp of approval on this, so it doesn't look like a cut down the road. And certainly if the administration wants to give guidance to the schools that, you know, if this money does come through, we'll be looking to give you more. But to have us vote on what is literally, literally not money we have in our hands right now, um, to me is kind of intuitive. I, I would agree with the mayor on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Questions from the council or the committee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
No.
Um, I don't know why we can't get this whole process down. This is exactly what we did last year, and we had the exact same complaints, uh, on the process. Uh, this is how Dr. Boyd does his budgeting process. I, I mean.
Okay, well, it's wrong.
We can pick it apart, we can pick it apart every meeting from now until we sign the damn budget, but this is how it goes. This is, this is how he allocates and, and how he plans. So, I, you know, I can't do this during that whole other budget season. I mean, i- i- you know, i- i- it's ridiculous, you know, and I mean, you know, in order to, to not make a move because it looks like we're cutting later. Who cares if it looks like we're cutting? Let's be transparent and, and let everybody know we're not cutting later. That that was a contingency amount and those positions are being, you know, dropped back because this is what happened when the money came in. I mean, cause it looks like we're cutting, I don't think it's a good idea to not go ahead with this. Uh, and isn't there contingency built in, Dr. Boyd, can you answer that question? I mean, if we don't get ten point three million, will the number going to fair student funding drop? Or, I mean, is there a contingency built in if we don't get the funding?
Sorry, Ms. Turner, do you wanna explain further?
Yeah, I think it's irresponsible to vote on money you don't have, so.
Oh, I know, but you know what, we thought the same thing last year when we were doing this whole process and it.
Well, I voted for it last year, I made a mistake because you, you don't budget with money you don't have, but, Dr. Boyd, if you want.
We're not.
We are, we do.
We're just allowing for some planning to happen.
We can plan without voting for money we don't have in hand.
All right, well, we're not doing anything with the money, all we're doing is saying, let's go. What, what, what's happening with the money?
We'll vote.
Right now.
Allow it to be a budget, but we're not gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote by the, the money amount, we don't have it in hand.
But Mr. Mayor.
We did this all last year, we didn't have a money amount all last year. But I don't understand how we can't underst- like get this budget process at this point.
Mr. Mayor, didn't we, didn't we last year, didn't we approve a budget? I mean, we approved a budget in May and then earlier this year, there were, earlier in this academic year, there were questions as to whether we were actually going to receive some money. And we questioned whether we might need to pull back some of that fair student funding, even though things had been planned for. And in the end, we didn't have to. But I, I agree with Mr. Dillon, we're, we're giving the schools an opportunity to make some pla- some plans. And, you know, at some point, if the money doesn't come through like we, we think it will, then they'll have to adjust those plans. But, but giving them, shorting them, the opportunity to plan means that they'll be making decisions later on with very short time.
Okay, so why can't you plan by somebody telling you the expected budget coming through, maybe $10 million? Why can't they stop planning?
Is that not what this is?
That is, that's, that, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's what you're doing here, I, that's, that's what you're doing here, so yes.
We're not spending money, right?
No, we're not.
What's the vote that you actually want, Mr. Man, Mr. Superintendent?
To establish the pools for the schools so we can build the workbooks, so it's the total pool.
Establish money is, so we can't vote on a, an amount of money that we don't have. So if we did it last year, it was a mistake. You don't plan or budget on money you don't have in hand. I mean, isn't that budgeting 101?
Well, you have to plan because, you have to plan because we, you're gonna approve a budget in May. So this enables us to engage the school communities. So we've had far more parents involved in the planning process through this process than previous processes. Because it allows our school site councils to operate in advance of the school committee voting. So we do have to establish a pool, we do need to establish the workbooks. I guess the question at hand is, does the committee want to weigh in on that? The typical across the country, when this is, this type of process is utilized, the committee does weigh in on it at this stage and each subsequent stage. But if the, there's not a comfort level, we, we can go forward with the planning process and build it out. This thing, this starts the school-based budgeting process, which begins the process where our parents get to weigh in on decisions on resources for their kid. You're not adopting any budget, though, you're not, we're not posting positions, we're not, uh, hiring any employees. Uh, we're not committing any dollars, you're committing to a planning process and you're committing to a pool of money if the forecast holds.
All right, um, okay, so are we done with this presentation? You're looking for a vote?
I believe there's a motion on the table.
And I second.
Yeah, I got a motion to approve.
And second.
Could I ask one quick question?
You are.
I'm, I'm wondering, you mentioned, um, Ms. Turner, that positions like social workers are not a central office and are paid from central office. Would that include special education positions like speech-language pathologists and things like that? Would we still be making decisions about those positions at a central office kind of level?
Yes, and I could share, um, an actual spreadsheet with you, like, um, on the budget itself. I went through the entire budget document and I added two columns saying locked and unlocked. So this is what I mean about the pool of money for schools is actually higher than sixty-nine percent. It's just that some of them, we haven't reached that level of sophistication yet where we can break down. Uh, we don't wanna give the schools that level yet where they can say yes to a psychologist, no to a psychologist, yes to a social worker, no to a social worker. Um, so we control all of those positions still. Because we don't want, we, we want, each school must have a social worker, you know? So we definitely have that in the centrally locked pool still.
Okay, so if I could just, I wanna just make the comment that if we're not voting on the actual budget now, it's for planning. I don't know why you need a vote from us anyway. Cause I, I do have some concerns about making a decision about money we don't have in our hand.
Yeah, you, you don't, by, you know, by rule, I, I guess you don't. It's more so out of, out of transparency and out of, uh, commitment to schools, to the process. So it's, it's more of just a transparent decision-making, bring it to you, then it goes to schools, then it comes back to you. It's, it's a procedural vote, but it's, uh, so we don't need it in order to act because we're not using the dollars. Um, it's more so just a recommended process that, that we've been following the last couple of years. Uh, but we'll follow whatever the committee so chooses, the committee changes, uh, we'll adapt.
All set, Ms. Darney? Are you all set?
I'm sorry, I am, I nodded my head and then I realized you can't see me. I'm all set, I, I'm not gonna support this motion, thank you.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Ms. Martin, Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Darney?
No.
Neil Lahey?
No.
Three A's, two N's, one absent, approved.
Okay, next, um, next, uh, one slide.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Uh, the next, uh, item up, I believe, is the budget adjustment, uh, transfers associated with the budget adjustment, is that correct, Ms., uh, Turner?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, we tried to take your advice and, um, try to, we tried to revise the form now that.
Ms. Turner, you still have the, uh, one presentation up unless you were planning to utilize this presentation?
Oh, I wasn't, no, okay, I see, um, this final slide was just to show you, um, that we did try to do exactly what you asked for. We put a column that says recurring or non-recurring. And as you can see, the only cost when, on that budget proposal that we brought to you last, um, meeting, we only have one cost that would have a recurring aspect to it. And then the yellow highlighted section is showing what, which of the costs have an impact on school reopening. So this is just, um, a summary of, you know, answering your questions. But it, it is using that budget proposal that is part of the next, um, for, um, action item, which is to approve the budget transfer that we brought to you already.
So, but let's make sure, Ms. Turner, your head's in this every day, so wanna make sure we can bring it back to the committee. So you had the finance subcommittee on February twenty-second where we processed through the current year, uh, surpluses and how we reallocate those to district priorities and reinvest those dollars to meet the needs of the reopening, the digital learning, uh, facilities and also, um, uh, prepayments towards next year. So, uh, right now, we're bringing to you the required transfers in order to act on those adjustments. And what Ms. Turner is sharing with you are the requests of the committee during that subcommittee on the additional information requested. Any questions, uh, Ms. Turner? So we, we wanna make sure we can give them a heads up and an intro into the, into the item.
So this was just the final slide showing them that we answered their questions. The actual next item is the budget transfer, which they have in front of them. I don't have a presentation on the budget transfer.
Item nine point three, committee, you're on item nine point three.
And so nine point three, we did, we redid the, um, form per the mayor's request. So we actually have a from section and a to section, and we made them into small mini sections so that you could see where we're pulling money from and where it's going. So for instance, on this sheet, we're showing that we had a savings and day-to-day substitute and tra- um, regular transportation. And that's where we got the 1.6 million dollars.
Do you want, excuse me, you, you have the slide up with, um, the yellow highlights, is that the page you wanna be talking about?
Actually, that's the end of that presentation, so now I'm talking about the transfers and we don't have a presentation.
Can you just take, just take down the presentation, Billy Joe, Ms. Turner?
A little confusing, okay.
Yes.
Now you're talking about the budget transfers, but then you have a whole presentation.
Well, we attached that for those that were not there when we did the presentation, but we're not going to go through that presentation today. That was just for a reference for those that may not have been present. That was the presentation we shared with, at the last meeting.
Okay.
That broke down all of our requests. As we explained during that presentation, we have extra funds in places like substitutes, transportation, things like that, and we were try, we were making recommendations on investing in goals such as, um, staff re- device replacement, new devices for students that are just, you know, new students that are coming in, classroom technology, the, um, the display technology, things like that. So we shared all of our goals with you. And, um, you know, that was when we showed the.
You're moving, you're moving too fast, Ms. Turner. Moving too fast, so there's, you're in this every single day, so it's, it's very important for you. Going back to February twenty-second is, feels like a world ago for, um, and, and the amount of work that's happened since then, so there's, do you have the presentation that you can remind them of? Can you put it up on the screen? February twenty-second, Ms. Turner, and you can, you don't have to show the whole presentation, but I think the visual might be able to recalibrate them.
Okay, give me one second, second find.
All right, as, as she's bringing it up, I'll, I'll try my best to intro it. So on the subcommittee meeting, if you recall, we had several areas where we had line item surpluses that approximately equated to about ten million dollars. You had additional needs for reopening that included, um, professional development as well as some, uh, equipment needs. You had digital learning needs, which was your staff devices, uh, Promethean, uh, boards. You then had, um, uh, offsetting next year's budget as well as the registration software. So these are the actual transfers in order to be able to begin this process of utilizing these dollars. There you go, there you go, Ms. Turner. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through this whole presentation. It is twenty-something pages, but just as a quick reminder, um, we were showing you how we have three sources of revenue that were, we have to, um, plan for. One of which was ten point five million dollars in current year savings. After we did the current year savings, um, after we identified those savings, we went on to show you limitations of use, but then we went through all the goals, like improving student achievement at every school site. We were recommending spending seven point six million dollars in this area. One, um, the cost that we were recommending included, um, supplemental staff by putting paras in the classrooms that have short-term leaves of absences. We recommended spending two point four million dollars on professional development by offering an eight-hour before school begins professional development for all staff and then forty additional hours at the contractual hourly rate, uh, classroom design and setup, as well as pre-plan and lesson development, all of that. And the other portion of the seven million dollars, we wanted to do the COVID pool testing. We wanted to do indoor air quality, which would cost sixty thousand dollars. So that, that's given you the goals for the seven point six million. Then we also had a, um, a recommendation here for digital learning. This is also part of that seven point six million. Four point two million dollars would get, um, interactive displays for approximately four hundred and fifty classrooms. We wanted to do, uh, teacher and school-based administrative, um, administrators device replacement, new student device dis- um, distribution, central office clerical device replacement, their computers are six to eight years old, clerical and custodian device replacement and IT device just, um, replacement, IT device, um, computers. Then goal number two was showing that we can improve operational efficiencies across the system by, um, pre-purchase and supplies as we did last year. And we told, you know, we talked about how we don't want to cause structural deficits. So we only do what we think we're going to get in, um, the following year's revenue sources. Um, not, goal number three, this goal number three, um, yeah, no, goal number three is here and we recommend it one point six million dollars, which we were planning on sharing with you at the facilities, um, subcommittee meeting. Um, and goal number four, we have brought to you the registration, online registration software, which is sixty-three thousand dollars. So this presentation, for those of you that were not present, it just took the ten point five million dollars that we've identified in savings and rather than wait till the end and frivolously spend it, we were trying to come up with a new plan for you. And what we did is we took the four goals that, you know, are, are, are the goals that we tried to run our district by and present to you by goal, how much we plan and we would like to redistribute and get your approval for. So the next item or the next action item is a budget transfer. And we kept that separate from the other budget transfer for the night so that you could clearly see on that budget transfer that's in front of you, the, um, nine point three, how it, it matches this presentation. So like, and this is what I was trying to explain, Ms. Mayor, when it says transfer, instead of going transfer to and transfer from, it now shows transfer from, shows where we're pulling the money from to fund the one point six million dollars for facilities. Shows where we're pulling the money fr- from to do the, um, investment in staff device replacement. It, trying to make it clearer so that it's more understandable for everyone looking.
The, the question, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, on that page, you have Lowell High School music teacher listed twice. And I don't know any of the music teachers that get, a teacher gets two hundred and four thousand dollars.
Wait, you, you said I, you say it twice?
I see, well, it, it's a, it's.
Oh, okay, you know why? I'm sorry, I can explain that. So as I was just saying, we're trying to make it clearer for the, um, for when the mayor was explaining that it was unclear. Before, if I had one account and taken it from music, the Lowell High School music teacher, it didn't go one-to-one, it would go from one account to four accounts. So in order to make it clearer, we actually have it, like even the, um, if you look above sped transportation, I took from sped transportation in a couple of different instances just to show the one to, to make it clearer for the one, the, the way the mayor was asking for it to be. So Lowell High School music teacher, no one makes that. That's actually a few of the band teachers. Um, a few of the band teachers retired or resigned this year and they weren't replaced because we weren't doing middle school band at the time. So there's a, definitely, and those people are charged to the Lowell High School music account. So there's savings there. And there were un- filled, there were a couple of vacancies in music at Lowell High.
So, just so, so that I can feel a little bit more secure as having been the one of those music teachers that, that, that position, those positions will be back there for the next school year?
Right, this, I will, uh, I'm emphasizing this is not cutting the positions. This is just that if there's money because of everything going on right now, those line items, we're not good, if I project out whoever's being charged to that line for the rest of the year, we have savings in those lines. Because of different things, like out of the three band teachers, two of them did, you know, they're going to hire them, they're still in the budget, but they did, but the rest of this year, we have money.
I see, okay, thank you.
Can we close the presentation?
Um, yeah, Ms. Darney and then Mr. Dillon.
No, Mr. Dillon can speak first. I just think it's impos- possible to see everybody. I wanted the presentation.
Got any questions?
I agree, no, um, yeah, I mean, for either Dr. Boyd or Ms. Turner, um, this is exactly the same money that is savings from the prior year that we can only spend on certain things. And we mapped out at the subcommittee meeting, things that could be allocated for, um, and these are your decisions. You're looking for approval?
Yes, that's, this is the action related to the subcommittee.
Motion, motion to approve.
If I could, I, I don't think we met.
Yes.
Facility Subcommittee didn't meet. All right, so you're looking for one point six million dollars and we don't really have a plan of how we're, at least I'm not aware of how we're spending it. We didn't discuss it. We didn't have a subcommittee meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, that's a good point, Ms. Doherty. This is a transfer to actualize not, not necessarily how that one point six is going to be used. You will earmark one point six of the total ten point five. And then, uh, we still have a joint committee that's going to be meeting between our operations office and the Department of Public Works that will be coming back to you with how we can utilize that out of the twenty million dollars or so of needs that'll then can be processed through. So your, the one point six will be, there's further study required for that, so you'll just earmark dollars of the one point six. The other dollars, which are really essential here, which are part of this transfer, are the professional development dollars, the digital learning dollars, those things where we're going to start going through a process of procurement, particularly around those items for reopening, which are significant within these transfers. Uh, so we, so the one point six, now you're not deciding if you're going to buy a, um, paint a room versus pave a sidewalk. Those things will be, those things will be determined later. Uh, you're just earmarking those dollars. That's a good point, clarity.
Um, I have a question on the transfers. Um, there's forty thousand dollars coming out of, um, Idea Camp stipends. Are we not doing Idea Camp this year?
We, that's actually for last year and we did still do a modified, um, version of it, but we got, we were able to charge it to a grant. So we, the money that we had put aside in the local budget is now free for us to use to, you know, for all these new endeavors. So it was charged to a grant.
And what about the, um, knowledgeable? That's from last year or this year?
Um, this past year, we didn't do it. We didn't have a knowledgeable. Or did we? I'm not sure if we, um, did, but we didn't pay. We have the money in the account. We didn't do a knowledgeable.
Well, we usually do that now. Isn't it usually March and April?
Ms., Ms. Desmond, can you share? Ms. Desmond, are you frozen on your screen?
Yeah, so we started last year. No, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, we started the knowledgeable last year, um, Mr. Mayor, and because of COVID, we had to stop. And so that's the same stoppage.
All right, is this money from this year or last year? Because last year's money should have been spent. Aren't we talking about?
This year. This is this year's money. But last July, our fiscal.
Last year?
No, when I've referred to last year for the Idea Camp, it's because anything after July first is, I'm referring, you said, are we still going to do the Idea Camp this year? Anything that happens after July first will be on next year's budget. So when I'm referring to the I- um, Idea Camp stipends, that was from last summer, but it's still this current fiscal year.
All right, and why was knowledgeable canceled this year? We couldn't set that up?
Ms. Desmond?
No, so, so, oh, you are correct, um, Mr. Mayor, we would have been doing it, um, it's, it used, it starts at the end of February and goes through March, but because we're not in, um, a place to have a full, um, return, we, we're not able to uh, do the teamwork that needed to be done ahead of time or to implement the knowledgeable this month.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Your honor, could I speak?
Ms. Darney?
Um, I, I, I want to express my concern here that we, it's great that we have ten million dollars in savings because we didn't spend it on transportation. We didn't spend it on substitute teachers because we've had this horrible year that we've had to be primarily remote. So that ten million came at a cost, right, in terms of what our kids got or didn't get, right? Um, I think we need to be very careful about how we spend it. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're just picking this one point, we'll go back to the one I already mentioned, facilities. One point six million, here you go. We don't exactly know how we're spending it. And then, what is it? Two point four million for professional development. I don't really have a clear idea of how that's going to be spent either. Um, I know that we had a gift of ten days of professional development uh, before the school year started that I think did not go as well as we all would have hoped. So before I am willing to spend chunks of money, millions of dollars, I feel like I, we need more information about how, what is professional development going to be? I've heard, uh, that there's going to be, we're going to be paying teachers to set up their classrooms after school, you know, or, or things like that. It's just, like, we need to really know that our money is going to be spent well. We don't have the luxury of just like throwing it out there. And I, we certainly, as Dr. Boyd agreed, we did not get a plan and get to discuss the plan for what we were going to do with the one point six million in facilities. I don't feel that confident about a plan for professional development either. And I know that's of concern because you want to start planning, uh, to provide teachers the support before they come back, but we still don't even know what our parents want. We don't have accurate information for each school. Who's going to be remote, who isn't? Those are all factors that are going to go into professional development. So before you ask me to give two point four million towards professional development, I'd like to have a better sense of how that money is going to be spent. Uh, and we're looking at over ten million dollars, as I said, which is a gift in savings because we've had major losses in what we've been able to provide for our kids. And we're limited in some areas in terms of how we can spend it. We have to buy equipment that makes sense. It can't be salaries, all that. We've had those discussions. But the actual, like, meat and substance of what we're going to get for these money, for these monies, I don't think has been clear, at least in those two areas. Uh, I, I'm not comfortable. I mean, this, deciding the money and the budget is one of the most important things we do. It absolutely is like a key role that we play. And as much as we work with the administration and we work collaboratively, collaboratively around making those decisions, uh, it's important for us to have the information in front of us so we know what we're voting on in terms of spending this money. And I just don't feel comfortable that we've got enough of the details for millions of dollars that we're going to be providing towards these, uh, blanket areas, professional development and facilities in particular.
Ms., Ms. Turner, can you scroll to the professional development? And yes, the facilities was a subcommittee that unfortunately had to, uh, be canceled. Uh, but nonetheless, you're not spending the money on facilities right now. These dollars are already allocated to the district. They're already within line items that they're not being utilized right now, so you're just realigning the line item. That's the budget transfer. So Ms. Turn, Ms. Desmond did walk the committee through this professional development allocation during the subcommittee and she can walk you through it again. The facilities subcommittee unfortunately had to be canceled. Uh, we're going to do that work jointly first with the city and then we'll bring it back to the committee. But you don't have to spend those dollars, just, uh, uh, we're just not transferring those dollars elsewhere. So, uh, Ms. Desmond, do you want to walk, uh, the committee again through the professional development? Ms. Desmond?
Sure, sure, yes.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Dillon?
I, I mean, is this necessary? We, I think we need to, I, I think we need to have a meeting of the school committee, uh, you know, o- outside of meeting time, whatever Joel wants to do, some kind of, I don't know. I, I mean, because we're not on the same page. I'm going to, I mean, this is the same exact place we found ourselves in last year with the budget. I mean, it, we're, we're, we just talked about this. We literally just went over this stuff. And we're, uh, what are we going to do? Are we going to, for the next few months, just continue to pick, 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 pick?
You went offline. You went offline. We couldn't hear you.
Am I on?
Now you're on now.
I don't know where I left off, but, you know, this is how we do things. We bring in the superintendent. We nitpick, we beat him up. I'm ready, I'm ready when I come into these meetings. I've heard all this before. I'm ready to make the, do this decision-making. I mean, you know, how you spend so many hours. You know how many hours the administration spends going over this stuff? And I go over all before we come onto these meetings. And we're asking questions here and nitpicking on stuff that we've already talked about and we've already been through these instances last year in the budget process. I think we need to let the superintendent and his brilliant team run the budget and stop nitpicking. It's insane.
All right, and that's fine, but it's our responsibility as the school committee to know where the money's being spent.
I know where the money's going. I already know this stuff.
Dillon, let me finish. When somebody comes in and asks you to approve a policy that isn't finished like last week, that's insanity. We approved the policy that nobody knows what the final link, uh, the outcome was, and we approved it. And the same thing tonight.
Which one was that? I'm sorry, just, can you remind me?
The, the changes to the kindergarten policy, uh, last meeting. We approved it and it wasn't even filed.
Well, again, I, you know, nitpick, uh, I, I mean.
Nitpicking, that's, would you go buy a car? And they gave you a contract and said, sign this, I'll fill out the.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I read all of these documents, so, you know, don't make it like I'm going into this blind. I'm the, I'm the one that's, I get it all, I got it all down. And last week's little nitpick, all we did is add a sentence that assured parents that might not have online access, that they still have access, we know that. That was such a little grammar nitpick on a giant document that had already had a million hours spent, and I had already read it. I don't know what we're doing here, we've got to get our, we've got to get our act together.
Sure, and the point being, you, we're approving policies that were not final, and changes can be made, and we're approving money.
Yeah, let's approve it, let's go, what are we doing?
You don't even know what they're going to spend it on.
Mr. Mayor, all right.
They're telling us we're going to spend it on professional development, but we have no idea what the money's going to be spent on.
All right, Ms. Turner, go over the whole thing again, please, thank you.
Can I just make two co- um points, just to um, to just put this into perspective? We, we, we do clearly show what we plan on spending the professional development on, but we didn't develop the actual PD until we get your approval. We wouldn't put all that, that work into developing a whole PD session until we know that we're okay with it. And more importantly, we, you know, when I talked about windows of time? Well, we're now in March, and if we don't make plans, where we thought we would make it a well-thought-out plan by investing in devices and PD and things that we need for our students, if we don't, the money's going back to the city, and even though we're all from the city, we're going to not have it for our students, and we're going to give it back to the city if we don't spend it because we're ru- running out of time, and we're running out of ideas on what we can spend it on that's still going to meet next school spending. So we've considered all of this stuff, and professional development is something that's definitely going to help. One thing that I said that um, and I, to try to put it into perspective, is we bought all these one-to-one devices for remote learning. And it's, I said it last time, it's like buying a Lamborghini and driving a horse and buggy if we don't offer the professional development to go along with it. There's so much investment that we have, and if we don't offer the professional development to go along with it, then it's sitting there with very expensive equipment with not in, in anything, with no one knowing how to use it. So the PD, we don't have a, we didn't design it yet because we need your approval before we can do that. We're not going to go and design stuff before we get your approval. Once you say yes, we move the money, then we come to you with, here's a clearly outlined plan. We're not saying, give it to us and we'll go run with it and do what we want with it. We're just saying, here's our general ideas, if you approve this, we'll go and master it and come up with detailed plans to share with you if you want to see them in subcommittees and things like that. And again, I'm not trying to rush you, I just want you to understand that we have to make a decision on whether we want to spend this in-house or send it back.
Yeah, that's that's typically, Mr. Mayor and committee, how you allocate for professional development. You don't typically, as a committee, approve all of the professional development plans. You'll, you'll allocate towards a certain number of hours and certain number of days. Our curriculum, our teaching and learning office will build out the professional development plan. So this allocation is based on a certain number of hours at the uh hourly rate and a certain number of hours at the per diem rate so that we can make sure we can support our teachers to prepare for this uh simultaneous teaching model both prior to and through uh that model. Without allocation and without access to these dollars, we won't have the um the money available to be able to support our teachers for implementing the reopening plan in April uh because we are on March third. We can walk the committee through all of this if the committee so desires, but it is uh uh the same presentation that you saw on the twenty second.
Mr. Mayor? I don't think we need to go through the presentation again, I I really wouldn't want to do that. If, and I know I've caused all this hullabaloo by bringing up these concerns, and I, I'm I'm not against um going forward, I'm just really dealing with the disappointment and of the ten days of professional development that we didn't utilize well in the fall. And I guess I I would prefer, you know, if we had the plan and then say, this is the, this is what the plan would cost. You know, that way of having us know where our money is going. Um, and especially where we've had instances such as the, I think, a lost opportunity with the professional development before school started. And certainly with the facilities, it would be the same sort of thing. If we had a plan that we had discussed and fleshed out, we might, we feel, I would feel more confident allocating the money to it, because what if the plan for professional development seemed like we didn't need as much, but we could have used more for facilities? Because we have many facility issues in our, our, you know, across the city that we might be able to have an impact on. So I'm I'm not trying to be an obstructionist, I read the reports just like Mr. Dillon does. Uh, I'm I'm looking to know what I'm spending the money on better than the information I have before me. Uh, but I'm certainly, I I I want us to move forward, I know that we, we need to uh make decisions and use that money wisely, and I would be looking for uh some explanation about how that two point four million is going to be well-spent, you know, once you come up with the plan that's based on getting the information from our families about how many are going to choose to be in person as opposed to remote. So if you guys want to move forward and make a motion on the, on accepting ten million dollars in spending, um, I I don't want to go over reports that we already went over.
I second the motion that Mr. Dillon made to move this forward and support Mr. Dillon in his um exasperation with the fact that we, we went over this information, and it is about as clear as day, and it's clear as day that we have twenty million dollars of facilities need. And as much money as we can possibly put there, we should put there in addition to the professional de- development, in addition to the student support services of sixty three thousand dollars with the thirty three thousand dollars of recurring costs. That is useful money, money put to good use. So I second the motion that Mr. Dillon made to move this forward.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
You're muted, sir.
I'm sorry, I, no.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Three A's, two Nays, one Absen approved.
All right, nine, four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, there's a, I would say, um, as we're going into this next one, um, Ms. Darty, and I know maybe the professional development at the beginning of the year wasn't, wasn't the most popular professional development, but based on the results our teachers are getting, it was highly effective at preparing for the year. We were able to shift between in-person and remote learning during this year. There were new concepts for our schools, and we did uh, were able to chart ninety-two percent and ninety-four percent attendance in each respective quarter. We are at approximately twenty percent chronic truancy, uh, which sounds high, but is is significantly lower than what uh urban districts across the country are reporting. Uh, that's all the re- results of not only training at the beginning, but the collaboration and the hard work of our teachers throughout the year, so.
You don't really need a narrative, with all due respect. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's a budget transfer to Ms. Turner.
This, we, we just separated out this um, the transfer, this second one is um pretty clear-cut, it's just the schools moving their funds around, um, again, they have control over their own money, so if they want to move it from general supplies to tech, they're allowed to do that, and these are the final days for them to do that. So this one's more just a request from the schools.
All right, motion to approve. By Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Any questions, roll call?
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Five A's, one option.
This one is uh, uh, realignment of the subcommittees, need most approved the realignment of the um, subcommittees.
I got a question.
Go, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I'd really encourage uh you to consider putting me as the chair of the facilities subcommittee. Uh, it has nothing to do with Ms. Darty, but I've been a part of the committee. Um, I've, I've been involved in the talks, and I want to keep spearheading that movement. So uh, I would request that you uh think about that, thank you.
As soon as we know who the new sub um, school committee person is going to be, we'll probably make some adjustments, so thank you.
Well, I know, we got these facilities uh meetings that we are supposed to be having, we just discussed, though, you know? I mean, this is stuff that we really, I I mean, I don't know what, how long that's going to take.
Yeah, I don't know, as far as I know, um, Mr. Leahy is going to, uh, requesting a um hearing to challenge his uh competency, or not his competency, but his uh.
Residency.
Residency.
Possibility.
All right, so that's a no on the changing the chair position.
For right now, yeah, yeah. Roll call?
I need it first.
Um, I think I said.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Dillon?
No.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Four A's, one A, one Absen approved.
All right, motion to adjourn. Dakota, Ms. um, Darty.
I'm good, Nate.